At this time, Ms. LaMagna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are in the lobby. Although persons are strongly encouraged to submit online public comment forums during the state of emergency, persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments on propositions coming before the City Commission Agenda for a vote. Subject to these city procedures and all social distancing requirements established by the Governor's executive orders. The Commission chambers will be closed to the public. The City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comment and audio/video feed to the City Commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for the persons who wish to make public comment. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the City Commission at the appropriate times when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for persons waiting to make public comment. In addition, the exterior entryway of City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comment due to space limitations in the lobby. Persons may also monitor public meetings from their iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate time when called upon. Persons who have finished speaking or not intending to speak on a matter coming before the City Commission will not be permitted to remain in City Hall. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart, and use of facial masks is encouraged to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions that are not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at that designated time. And resolutions under item 10 are also open for public comment, and citizens may speak at the designated time. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please be clear into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry? Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Trager, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Reed.
Heavenly Father, at this time, in our lives, in our city, in our country, in the whole world, please look down upon us with mercy. Help us through this troubled time. Give us the strength to do what is right. And please help us to get over with this as quickly as possible with less loss of lives as possible. Bless our first responders and all those who work so that we may stay home safely. Give wisdom to us as we try to do the business of the city, and we appreciate this. Thank you so much. God bless. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to repel evil, which is vengeance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number four, the approval of the minutes of the June 3 regular City Commission meeting will be on the July 1 2020 City Commission Agenda.
If possible, could we have a conversation or discussion on item 8A? Is that possible?
We haven't gone to the agenda approval yet.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, but you want to pull.
Okay.
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 Item 8A.
Item 4A, approval of the minutes. You said they were pulled. We will now move on to item number five, our agenda approval. If there are any changes, the City Manager will read them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think 8A, that we just heard it, is we'll pull that for the end of all other business and bring that up. And then there's a presentation really at the end of those discussions that the police chief will provide a police report, and then a discussion on the Citizens Review Board.
It is the agenda approval, right?
Yes.
There's some additional changes.
Which is the new and which is the old? Do you know?
No. Okay, then we got a. Continue, item 9A, Project Delta West. An amendment to the Large-Scale Comp Plan, continue it to August the 19th. City Commission meeting at the request of the applicant. Move Agenda Item 10D, Land Development Code Amendment to the July 1 City Commission meeting. Add Agenda Item 10F, Presentation Discussion, Proposed Police Department Advisory Boards.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on to item 6. No presentations during this particular section. We're going to move on to item number 7, which is the citizen comments. This is the opportunity for citizens to address the City Commission on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker, Mr. John Nicholson, speaking on item 8C.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue, Daytona Beach. About 17 years ago, Charles Cherry, who was Zone 6 Commissioner at the time, and I had a discussion on the appointment to the board, there was a mayor's son who wanted to be on the housing board, and his comment was that there should be no white people on the board because hot housing is 99% black. All right? As you know, the mayor appoints the board. The board is 80% black. It is not diverse. This item, if that amount is to be for public housing, for affordable housing, I'm asking that you diversify. I went to a state senator when we did HOPE 6. We are now at 23%, I think diversified. I'm asking that you absolutely mandate that this housing that comes in line is available to white, Hispanic, and Asians as well as black. Thank you.
That's just ridiculous.
What?
It's ridiculous that you would say that the housing is not available to those individuals and to those people based on the makeup of the board. It's absurd comment.
Mr. Mayor, I completely agree with you. Have some motion approved and signed.
Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
8A, item 8A?
8A.
The next one coming, gotcha. Okay, I'm with you. I'm with you.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
So we'll move on now to our public hearings. Item number nine. Item 9A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Delta West, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, adopting amendments to a future land use map, changing the future land use designation of 2.0 plus or minus acres of property located on the east side of Ridgewood Avenue, north of International Speedway Boulevard, and south of Bay Street, from commercial mixed use to high intensity mixed use. Amending Neighborhood Policy E with respect to 5.9 plus or minus acres of property located on the block founded by Ridgewood Avenue, International Speedway Boulevard, Palmetto Avenue, and Bay Street to allow a maximum density of 150 dwelling units per acre and a maximum floor area ratio of 10, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. On behalf of the applicant, they've asked that this item be continued to the August 19 2020 City Commission meeting.
Move to continue.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries. He got blanked out. I'm not sure if it's 7-0. I didn't see his mouth move.
Moving on to item 9B. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Code of Ordinances Text Amendment, the Mobile Food Vendors. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the City Code, Section 103-2, to revise mobile food vendor license conditions, repealing the City Code, Section 103-3, which provided for an automatic repeal of the City Code, Chapter 103, effective June 19 2020, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to our next item, 9C. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, JMJ Silver Pine, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 54 plus or minus acres of land generally located southeast of the intersection of International Golf Drive and LPGA Boulevard, from Golf and Level 2 Residential to Level 1 Residential, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood T Development Policy, to limit the residential density of the entire area of the land subject to the policy, consisting of 141.4 plus or minus acres to a 4 unit per acre, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner May.
I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Hi, Jessica. No questions for Jessica? All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for August 19. Moving on to item number 9D. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Timber Creek, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, in relation to 61.4 plus or minus acres of property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of LPGA Boulevard and Tournament Drive, amending the future land use of 11.3 plus or minus acre section of the subject property from Level 1 Residential to mixed use. Amending the future land use element, Neighborhood T Development Policy, limiting commercial development on the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Trager. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those who are in favor, let it be so noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, the public hearing is set for August 19. Moving on to item 9E. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Sun Glow Mini Storage, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 13.4 acres of land located north of LPGA Boulevard and west of Wesley Street, from city Level 2 Residential and Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to city mixed use, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood K Development Policy, to allow for the development of the land referenced above as mixed-use commercial storage, subject to conditions designed to limit the impact of such use on nearby residential developments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
And I do have Joey, is it Posey here, on behalf of the applicant for any questions?
Okay, welcome, Joey. No questions? All right, all those who are in favor, let it be so noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. 6-0.
The public hearing is set for August 19. We'll now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Sun Glow Mini Storage, Voluntary Annexation. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance annexing into the city of Daytona Beach 3.3 plus or minus acres of property located at 1378 Taylor Road, north of LPGA Boulevard, and west of Wesley Street, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Daytona Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 5 of the city of Daytona Beach to include the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Notice this first read. We have no questions.
And I do have Mr. Posey here for any questions.
All right, no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
The public hearing is set for August 19. We'll now move on to item 10B. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, excuse me, Second Amendment to the Halifax Habitat PD Agreement and PDG Rezoning for Sun Glow Mini Storage. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 12.9 plus or minus acres of property located approximately 500 feet north of the intersection of LPGA Boulevard and Jimmy Ann Drive, Wesley Street, from PDG Plan Development General, MFR 12, multifamily residential 12, and Volusia County R4 Urban Single Family Residential, to PDG Plan Development General District, approving the Second Amendment to the amended and restated Halifax Habitat Village Plan District Agreement, removing a portion of the subject property from the Halifax.
You have entered as an organizer and may not speak to any other organizers or panel.
Village Plan District, approving the Sun Glow Mini Storage Complex Plan District Agreement, authorizing the subject property to be developed for self-storage mini warehouse and office uses, subject to conditions, excuse me, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the above referenced documents, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances to the extent of conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And I do have Mr. Posey here for questions of the applicant.
All right, no questions for Mr. Posey. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries 6-0. You are back.
The public hearing is set for August 19. Moving on to item 10C. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Timber Creek Rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 61.4 plus or minus acres of property located at the northeast intersection of LPGA Boulevard and Tournament Drive, from SFR 5, Single Family Residential 5, to PDG Plan Development General District, approving the Timber Creek Plan District Agreement, allowing the property to be developed with mixed residential and commercial uses, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
No questions for Ms. Jessica? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 7-0.
And the public hearing is set for August 19.
He is acknowledging.
Do we have audio for Commissioner Delgado?
I can speak.
Very good, thank you.
I've never been asked to speak before, so it's nice.
I just watch him. But you gotta say it, I guess he's saying, so just nod and say aye. Or no.
I don't know.
As the case may be.
Okay. I lost you guys for like five items. Everyone disappeared, so it's good to have you all back. I was ruling and making my own decisions while you guys were gone, it was great.
Okay, we're going to move on. Item 10D, this one is being moved, and it's on first reading, so this one's being moved to July 1 2020 City Commission meeting. So it doesn't need to be continued.
And that's so that it has time to go to Planning Board next week and then come back to us after Planning Board, correct? That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10E. It's the City Manager's Office Racing and Recreational Facilities District Appointment Resolution, a resolution appointing one member of Daytona Beach Racing and Recreational Facilities District Commission for a term expiring July 1 2020, excuse me, 2024, and providing an effective date. So this is an appointment. Mr. Burden's term is expiring July 1. He has asked to be reappointed. We have one other applicant, Bradford Gonzalez. Ms. Ruby, my understanding this morning, she withdrew her application.
Motion to reappoint George Burden.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We'll take a second from Commissioner Reed and a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. The motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we're going to go back now. Going to go back to item 8A that was pulled. It's a legal department resolution extending the local state of emergency, a resolution extending the local state of emergency due to COVID-19 for an additional seven-day period ending June 24 2020, authorizing the mayor to extend the local state of emergency for up to four additional seven-day increments subject to conditions, ratifying mayoral executive order number 8, and providing an effective date. And I believe it was Commissioner May that pulled this item.
Yeah. So what I'd like to discuss is, so every week, a couple of times a week, I take drives to different parts of the city, I visit different zones, and I go to the major thoroughfare side streets and take a look at what's going on. So on the weekends, I generally, I always do the beachside area. I did not see one guest from ISB to Ormond as they're walking with the face mask on. And I recognize that we're outside, but they were also not taking a look at the six-foot distancing type situation. And it was disturbing considering how hard we've worked locally to keep our numbers in check. So I appreciate this evening that we're wearing masks. So we obviously stand by this and we support you in this effort, and you know, a lot of the decisions you've made have been really good. So my request is that we have a recommendation to wear face masks, and I'm hoping Mr. Jaggar has something. We also researched the idea of the implications of this in other cities, and we're just saying... Mr. Jaggar, could you speak to it, please? Could you phrase it?
Sure, and just by way of background, during our pre-meeting with the manager and Commissioner May, we talked about this concept of inserting some language into the resolution extending the state of emergency to provide for a recommendation to wear facial mask when out in public when social distancing is not possible. So I did draft up a sentence or two to cover that, and assuming a motion is made, you know, this language be incorporated into the resolution.
I agree with that, but I was in my comments going to recommend that we actually go a little bit further.
Okay.
Because we see a spike nationally, and we see one locally, but there are some things that we control, and we are opening city businesses and buildings up in this City Hall. I mean, I'm not saying that we have to, but we could consider saying that in order to... We require people who come to City Hall to do business to wear face masks. We don't have to do that throughout the city, and we don't have to do that, but if you all think that you want to take that strong of a position, and I consider it and think it's something that we should consider, meaning that if you come to City Hall or any city building that is open, you have to wear a mask.
Okay.
Because at some point in time, and the research shows it is clearly impacting the spike, you know, and so at some point in time, someone has to take a stand to say that this is this important, even if it's only in the areas that we control. We realize that we could go... I think it's a step in the start. I don't know if you all, what your opinions are on that or what.
I want to know the impact on the children's program because I've been keeping tabs on what's going on there. I think I sent an FYI sometime this week about some children's programs in a different city that was impacted by COVID. And so my question is, I actually, I wanted to know, how do we manage that with the children's programs? Are we asking that they wear face masks? I know they're doing social distancing. I know the employees are using them. I know they have fantastic sanitary practices. How does this impact that city building? But I'm in support of this. I also noticed that in our paperwork, the last line says, "Use of facial mask is encouraged to combat the spread of COVID as it relates to our public area out there." And so I'm hoping that people look at this as a very strong recommendation, but I like that it's now going to be, "And if you come to city meetings, please do this. It would be a good idea." But how would this impact the kids when they are in there? Because they're over the age of two, because that's the standing, right? Over the age of two?
Well, you could create an exception, of course, for your school programs, your school age children's programs.
Well, I agree that it's shameful that we are having a sudden spike again after all that we have tried to do to control this epidemic, pandemic, whatever. I was hoping we might have closed, stayed, had it stayed closed maybe a month longer, it might have helped some, but since we did, I do think we definitely have to do something now. I can just see it getting worse, and I'm really ashamed that Arizona is, I mean, Florida's up there with Arizona, is really going the wrong way.
You know, I made a point of contacting somebody at the harbor to find out what the impact of this would be on tourism concepts, perception, economy, et cetera, because I'm including them in decisions that deal with tourism and economics, to say, "What is your position on this?" And they were comfortable with it. So it's not that this particular, the one I'm discussing, it's not in the community, it's not mandatory, but we are strongly encouraging it. For the city, though, I think yes, I think we set the tone.
Bob, if somebody says they have asthma, then we cannot require them to wear a mask, right? If they say that it causes them trouble with breathing.
Like unless it's a medical condition?
Yeah, their medical condition.
Medical condition, yeah.
It's hard to draw through the mask.
Yeah, but there's exceptions for that?
Yes, typically there's an exception for persons who cannot medically tolerate wearing a face mask, but I've heard a couple of different things here in terms of what we'll include in the motion and ultimately in the resolution. Commissioner May's was really a strong recommendation for people out in public to wear a mask. And Mayor, I think you're saying a requirement that people in city buildings wear facial masks when it's medically available. And we'll create an exception then, as Commissioner Trager said, for our student-age children's programming. Have I got that straight?
That's my preference. I don't know if anybody's.
I brought up the kids.
I'm okay with this discussion. I'm not trying to...
I'm fine with all that.
I am too.
So we'll be providing masks for people that come to the City Hall?
I think that we do have to provide masks.
Yeah.
We have to provide masks for our staff.
But the intent is for all city buildings, a requirement for people to wear masks?
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
Drew, what is the challenge of that? Because I can't, we can't. I realize it is a challenge.
I won't speak to the idea except for, at least statistically speaking, we're not going up, we're testing more often. We had our Department of Health phone call today, they provided all the statistics which I have here for you. But regardless, the encouragement of masks or the requirement of masks, that is up to you. As far as, from a fire perspective, I would ask for some consideration as they're there in the facility for 24 hours. Is the intent of wearing a mask when social distancing is not available, so people in separate offices that have the distancing, they would not have to wear a mask? Because I could maintain distance amongst the crew. Because I, I could maintain distance amongst the crew outside of when they're responding together.
Well, I, I mean, that's good that you bring that up, and I think that's a fair exceptionality. I also think it's a fair exceptionality for staff when they're in the office. But everyone who works in this building, once they interact with people, should have a mask if they're not able to socially distance. You know, so when you go into a meeting, and you're all in a meeting at a, at a table with the city manager, people should have their mask.
Yes, it provides a good function to reduce you spreading to someone else, and a minor effect for, positive benefit for the wear. But yes, it is beneficial.
You know, I watched, I came into the building, I did not have my mask. I stopped, I saw two people in the hallway, I left at the door, and I think they saw me here, I think it was Mr. Mazerick saw me. I left, I saw you, I left, I went to my car, got my mask, and came right back, right? So it's that, the casual, you, you open a door, two people do this. It's those little incidents that create issues sometimes. So, no, I think this is good.
Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm pretty sure the current Department of Health recommendation is if you're gonna be within six feet of somebody for 15 minutes or more, to wear a mask.
That is correct. For the extended duration is the major component.
In the hallway, evidently the likelihood of passing the virus is extraordinarily low.
Sure.
As is asymptomatic transmission is limited, and touch transmission is limited also.
And again, these, this, these bits of information continue to evolve, right? So last month it was something else, and the next month it's something else. So we don't yet know completely what we're looking at.
I think we're learning more.
Exactly. So we're, but we're trying to say, what is the best practice we can possibly provide? That's what I'm looking at, the best practice. What can we do to the best, the maximum potential? That's what I'm looking at. Why do something at 20% when you can do it really well?
So what are the numbers that you say you have, as you say, we, and I, I haven't noticed the numbers of Daytona Beach going up, or I don't know about Volusia County. Certainly the state, the numbers are going up.
The numbers in Volusia County and the state continue to decline, actually. If we're looking at a percent positive rate, so we're testing more. And I know that's a common theme you hear in the media, that we're testing more. But how does that translate? Yes, you're finding more positive people, but out of the number of tests conducted, the margin of people that are actually testing positive is reduced. And as far as testing more, we've tested nearly 10,000 people alone in the month of June out of the 30,000 people tested throughout the entire timeframe in Volusia County. So that's a large percentage that only recently tested. We're a 3.2% positive rate here in Volusia County, and we're up to 5.6%. In April 1st in Volusia County, where we're 10%, May 1st, 5%, and again today, we're 3.2% positive rate.
Do you feel?
But we had the 10% positive rate when people were only being tested because they were symptomatic.
Correct. So we had a large amount of symptomatic or people with pre-existing health conditions that their doctor gave them a prescription. Now it's the testing that we're conducting next week at Gene Street. Please pre-register if you can. That is, you do not have to be symptomatic to be tested, and that is for all ages. So yes, we're, the likelihood of us testing a positive person has decreased as we expanded the, the requirements for testing.
Okay. So I have a curious question, sir. You're just providing information. You're just providing information right now, correct?
Yes, not my thing.
Okay, so if I said to you, I would like for you to walk from the top of A1A on a Saturday when there are people there without a mask on the sidewalk, would you feel comfortable doing this? Now I recognize that it's transmission with one person in a room for 15 minutes. But what if it's multiple as you're walking down the street, and you're actually walking in a fog and you don't realize it? Or do you feel comfortable doing that? Would you feel comfortable doing that?
If you're asking for my personal belief, my personal belief is yes, but that is just me. That would not be my position. My position with the city is determined by you all. And in that scenario, that's assuming all persons are infected. But if we're just doing the one person in the group of 10 I'm passing by, then again, we go back to the duration and distancing if I'm likely to become infected.
I guess I don't feel that lucky. As healthy and fit as I am, I personally, I don't feel that lucky. So, all right.
So you said the likelihood of testing a positive person is going up?
The likelihood of.
Going down.
Correct. Because we're opening the, broadening the horizons of what we allow for testing. We've increased age, you do not have to be symptomatic. And come Wednesday and Thursday, we'll have the fifth testing site in, in Daytona Beach alone. So the increase in testing, we've, we're drawn from a bigger pool of people. And that's probably why our number, our percent positive rate is low, lower, I should say. It's not low.
You know, a lot of what we're talking about are things that it's not gonna hurt us to do it. It's not gonna hurt anybody to go, to, to make this amendment, these amendments that we're talking about. Because it doesn't take much, you know? I, I saw an article today about, right after the bars reopened in Jacksonville, some Irish pub up there, 15 friends went out. All of them were now positive, you know? And evidently, a lot of people in that, that were in that bar were positive, they weren't part of that group of 15. Now, of course, the group was supposed to be 10, you know, so they clearly weren't doing what they were supposed to be doing. But, you know, they probably picked up 50 cases, you know, 40 to 50 cases positive because there was one person in that bar that was positive, and 40 people got it from that one person. So taking these precautions is a good thing to do.
So, you know, just to, to speak on that, one person does something. It impacts 40 other lives, 40 other lives who have businesses, who have employment issues, who have to pay their bills, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One person. That's the part that scares me.
It should.
Yeah.
It should.
And any comments I've offered were only to not minimize the importance of COVID and our, how we must remain vigilant. These are just the statistical information I've received from the Department of Health.
Okay, and thank you. That's a sharp suit you got on there.
Are you speaking to us later, Chief? You were saying something about a Gene Street testing?
Oh, thank you very much for bringing that up. On Wednesday, June 24th, from the hours of nine to one, we're offering drive-through testing across from the former DMV building. And on Thursday, June 25th, we're offering walk-up testing at that same location between the hours of nine and one. All ages are welcome. You do not have to be symptomatic. Show up, and you'll get the swap.
Fantastic.
And that's through our partnership with the local Department of Health.
Great.
Good job.
Thank you.
Now, on this item that we're on, the addition is that we're strongly recommending people to wear masks where?
In public. Yeah, in public. This is what we're asking for. And then I'm keeping this, if you're greater than six feet, and all of this.
Well, we did, but I just want to make sure that the language is.
This was something that I brought up weeks ago.
But we, but we didn't add it into the language, we just talked about it.
It was in one of our local emergency declarations that, that we strongly recommended the use of masks. But then we got to that one where the governor came out with something that sort of quashed all the local ones.
Oh, okay. Now.
Would this go, as we were just having a conversation, would this go into, do we have this in our marketing now? This language at all? Given that it was discussed before, is it in our, in our marketing that we encouraged it, given that?
Now, because I, I, I want us to be a model of what we should be doing and not something else, even when I'm in the grocery store. And it doesn't mean that tonight, but we, we need to start sending a message to people with that this is something that we're encouraging. And I think this is a good first step by us, the things that we regulate, because this is summer. This is not fall, you know? And so no matter what we say, COVID is not taking a summer break, from what I can see. I was hoping that the numbers would, would really start to plummet, even, even though I realize we're testing more people. So, all right, any other comments on this? I'm very good with that.
Can we get Bob to recap what the three things are?
Sure, I'll be glad to recap that. So what I'm expecting then is a motion to approve the resolution extending the state of emergency with the following revisions. Number one, we'll require all persons entering city buildings to wear a mask when social distancing is not available where such persons are medically able to do so. And we'll create an exception for school-age children participating in city programs. And then secondarily, we'll insert a recommendation that all persons, again, who are medically able to tolerate a face covering, where such, when in a public place and unable to maintain a six-foot social distance. Those two additions.
But does that mean that if a person comes to city hall, they should have a mask?
They would be turned away if not.
Okay.
And then the question I think you had, sir, was would we be providing them? That was the question you had.
We'll have them available.
We'll have them available. All right.
Unless they say they have asthma, and then you have to have a mask.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine. That's good.
One other thing. And previously, we had closed the, the use of the Breakers Park and, and the Bandshell during weekends because of the crowd gathering and not being able to maintain the CDC's space requirements. I've had a request that we open it up and have the shows we normally have during the summer beginning July the 11th. Are we gonna keep it? I guess I'm looking for a direction. Do you want us to keep it closed? Or you want us to wait and address it again in our July meetings, or what would be your preference?
Can we, let's, let's wrap up the thing we're just doing. So I'll make, make the motion with the additions with Bob.
I'll second.
I'll come right back. Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. You don't have to take a vote on that, right? I mean, we don't have to take a public comment. That's what I was wondering. All right, do we have public comment?
I've had no one sign up to speak for this item when it was pulled.
All right. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear you? Okay, I saw you. All right, you got us muted. Must have music on.
I can live.
All those in favor have said we voted.
I don't need to say it.
Motion carries 7-0. Okay, returning to the park.
Yes.
Previously, we had closed the park, particularly on weekends, beginning Friday evening through Sunday evening. And that, the, we have shows that were usually planned for Saturday and Sunday in the, in the Bandshell area. And they were asking, can we bring them back, and if so, are we allowed to do it now? Or do we want to, I'm asking for direction. Do you want to leave it closed the way it is, or would you like to open it?
I had a conversation with Dino about this, and, you know, under the current, the governor's current executive order, you know, like auditoriums are at 50% capacity, which are, which are in. And there's definitely evidence out there that they're, the, the likelihood of transmission outdoors is less than it is indoors. You know, my point to him was, you know, you know, you, you need to have a plan on how you're going to be able to keep people safe, you know, if we decide to re, you know, reinstitute the concert series. You know, his, he, he felt that he could do that if they went, if they kept it at 75%. I haven't seen any sort of plan with that, and I'm not, you know, as much as I want to see people coming back to Daytona, I don't want to see, you know, the, the percentage of people that are testing positive going up. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of middle of the road on this because, you know, the economic side of me says, yeah, yeah, yeah. And the public health side says, no, no, no. So I'm, I'm curious what everybody else thinks.
Mr. Norris may have some information about what's, what's been steps are taken.
Mission Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. We've actually had a discussion, Mr. Gilliland, and that would be first to maintain the distancing. Take every other row of seats, you can only see it sit in every other row. And in fact, there will be a row of seats, the next one will be two or three chairs flagged off where a row would ordinarily be. So you couldn't sit there. The next row would come up. Narrow down the number of entries that you come in, and people will be temperature-checked as they come in. Have to have the required temperature as far as that goes. And in respect to the spacing, do it that way. We talked about other details to implement the safety guidelines. We've had some conversations with Drew.
I think masks would be required.
Sir?
The mask would be required, I think.
We hadn't, we hadn't implemented the mask discussion that you've just had tonight. We can certainly do that. I think probably the issue there may be supplying masks for people that don't have them, or turning them away. And that's so, we haven't dealt with that question per se prior to this moment. We can do that and report back. And I think there's a way to address that part of it as well. So the intention is to look at spacing, you're open air, keep people apart from each other, deal with concessions and so on the way that you deal with them now as far as maintaining distance person to person, mark that out. And also control the entrances so you don't have the same free flow of people that you would have in the normal circumstance. And you're checking those people coming in for temperature purposes, just as we do each day here at City Hall. So those were the protocols in general that we talked about. I may be omitting something. But we did have a discussion. I think Dino was informed by his conversation with you, as well as conversations with Drew. And Drew is very good about helping us with operational procedures. And Drew and I talk about whatever we need to talk about, we do that just by phone call.
Was there any conversation about, you know, at the southern end of the, of the Bandshell, you know, courtyard? A lot of times during the summer concert series, people will congregate there, you know, kind of.
So when you say the southern end of the courtyard, I am taking that area to be outside the confines of the walls. And we hadn't thought about or considered how to exercise control over that. We actually don't have control over them anyway because of the way the thing is set up. From the standpoint of, and I hate to involve the police department to do other things in relation to that. So that part hasn't been considered. We consider it within the confines of what we ordinarily control and the way that we'd ordinarily operate, but not to try and get beyond that limit, which we haven't before anyway.
And he wanted to start, I think it was around the 10th or 12th of July?
It was the 11th, and the 11th, I think, is a Friday. So the city does Friday shows. Dino's group does shows on Saturday, but we coordinate with their shows. We have complimentary shows, complimentary advertising. Each side underpins the other as far as acts and concessions and those things. So while you've got two promoters, if you will, those promoters, the city and Dino's group work hand-in-hand to coordinate and give a show. And you can see, excuse me, this is going back a little bit. The Friday shoes, shows used to be very, very poorly attended. We have now, maybe good, maybe bad, roughly the same attendance Friday and Saturday because of the quality of the acts and so on. People want to come to both. The Friday shows, really, people didn't come prior to the changes that we made to coordinate the acts and the promoters and so on. But the same standards will apply. You won't be able to tell the difference Friday or Saturday. It will be the very same operational procedures. And the same staff people, other than friends of the Bandshell on Saturday, operate the things that you're talking about.
So does this open the door for other people to come in and, and ask for permits, and then to start the process of permitting again? And have events? Because what's the difference?
I think the answer to the question is probably yes.
Okay.
And, and so from the standpoint of the way that we ordinarily do things in this country, you would do the same for others as you do for yourself.
Exactly.
I think that's the correct answer. Probably not a question that got debated. But our intention is to do what's necessary. And the commission's actions tonight as it relates to masks is something instructive and a little different than what we've dealt with prior to. This evening, we will implement and coordinate that too.
Did you give them, didn't you give them permission or something a long time last year?
In terms of the shows?
Uh, yeah.
No, we've got a normal schedule. It's a summer schedule, and we're well into that already. But actually, the bookings and so on have been held up, waiting for executive order direction, the input of the commission and the consent of the commission to move forward. So the contracts have been held, and those things are in place, but it's, they're not active yet. It depends on the commission's decision. We also have a similar thing for Midtown Motown, working along those same lines for Midtown Motown. We've done all of that, again, trying to treat everyone the same. As far as what we've done at Midtown Motown and what we're doing on the Bandshell, we've done the best we can to be equal in terms of treatment, acts, timing, extent of the shows, because they kind of go towards the end of summer a little further than they did had we started on time. Everybody has been treated as far as I can say. Everybody has been treated, as far as I can say, in equal terms, to provide equal opportunity.
All right, I'll start.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm pretty consistent, if we're going to have a conversation about this. I'm pretty consistent. So, I mean, I cannot just, it's one way, it's one way for me. So for me personally, if I can have a, and I'm willing to start the conversation here. I cannot go with this, as much as it hurts me because I do work diligently with the businesses on the beach side. I cannot, on the one hand, advocate A and at the same time advocate B. I cannot be that person. So for me, I would have to say, if somebody wants to have a conversation about this, I cannot do that from a public health perspective at this time. For me, I can't do that.
Anyone else?
You know, I think I'd need more substance to a plan for me to really kind of chew on and figure out whether or not I think it's something that would be reasonable. You know, the, we're talking every other row, you know, Dino was talking about 75%, every other row is going to be 50%. I also have that concern about people congregating outside of the walls and what the plan would be to disperse them if we can. You know, the governor exempted that, you know, gathering piece from the second-degree misdemeanor that's in place for violating much anything else in the executive order. So, you know, I'd say at this point, I'm not sure if at 50%, Dino can make it work. I think he told me he could not. You know, that really, dollar-wise, it's got to be 75 or it just fails. But if we're at 50%, it may, it may just resolve itself as far as the, you know, his shows go because, you know, they wouldn't work out financially.
If I may, ma'am, we can reduce this all to writing so the commission can have it, have it in time to look at it. You have a meeting July 1.
Is Dino out there?
Yeah.
Ma'am, I think that he is.
Yeah, yeah. Do you hear what we're saying? Do you have something to say, Dino?
Well, I just signed up this week. We're willing to work with staff and come up with, what we propose to do is have, there's five entrances to the Band Shell. And I met with the city manager and I've talked to Mr. Norris also about this. There's five entrances. We were proposing to close two out of the five entrances, have two security guards stationed at each of the other three entrances. We were going to have signage, you know, which is the same signage that you'll see if you go to the driver's license place, county buildings, in fact, the same company that make, that I'm going to get the sign from if passed. It's the same orders that, you know, have you been, have you been out of the country? Have you been on a cruise? You know, those typical questions. So the people have to answer those questions. They will be temperature-checked, and we will be requiring the use of face masks. If somebody comes without the face mask, we will have the face mask for sale at, you know, what, a dollar, $2, whatever, you know, and we're not going to gouge the public, you know, so that the public would be able to wear the face mask. Now, and I discussed this with the city manager at the VIP thing, we will space it out what, every other row, so that way the people will be, but mind you, remember, this is an outdoor event, you know, so the, there's less of a chance of transmission in an outdoor event, but we are requiring the use of face masks in addition to all the screening requirements. So we're, we're there to, and if there's anything else the city wants us to do, we're willing to do it. But the problem is, is that there's a lot of planning that has to go into this. I have invitations to print for the VIP party. We want to honor the veterans on July, I mean, excuse me, on July 11th, you know, because we weren't able to honor them. And we already, I already prepaid, which will go to next year if that's the plaques that we want to give to the veterans, because, because I had, you know, we, there's a point in time where a lot of this plan has to come together for it to happen, you know. The fireworks people are on hold, the bands, some of the bands have plane trips to make, to come to this area to perform. And we're holding there Saturday nights, and I, and, you know, what I'm trying to say is that the details, if there's, you know, if, obviously, if things go in reverse, the city manager will always have the ability to cancel the concerts. We put it into our contracts that if there's government closure, then our deposits will go to next year. We're hoping that, that what we're doing here is going to go in the right direction and everything. And we're taking all the precautions that you've seen other venues take. And so we're hoping things go in the right direction. But if things don't, the city manager will have the ability to say, stop. And then we'll have to cancel the rest of the concert series as a result of that. But a lot of these, you know, will require, like, we're going to coordinate with the city for Friday night, and we've got posters, banners, things that have to be done. So, you know, obviously, we would appreciate a green light, knowing that if things go bad, you could always stop. But we don't intend things to go bad. We're going to do it responsibly, and that's what we propose to do. And Dino Pass Black is 565 Riverside Drive.
Commissioner Delgado, do you have any comments?
I've talked to Dino about this, and I know his concern. You know, but I'm also with Commissioner May on the, you know, what's good for one is good for all. I'm very concerned about, you know, creating an atmosphere where it seems like the, maybe the city is sanctioning or encouraging something that may not be the safest route. I'd really like to see a kind of a written plan in place and have a moment to look over that before I really give a vote one way or the other. I really want to, you know, I don't want Dino to suffer and not be able to put on this project because I know how much she puts into it. But at the same time, and we just, Commissioner Gilliland just gave us an example of how one, one bar saw 50 new cases, and if those 50 people go home, so just even one infected person, if that got out of hand, it could be really devastating. So I'd like to see a more concrete plan for what it would be and see if that's even feasible. Like Mr. Gilliland said, it may just not be, it may just not be economically feasible.
And by the way, I had emailed every commissioner in the mail, a step-by-step plan that we were planning on taking, you know, so that everybody would be aware of, you know, what we would be doing. And I even put in the email the orders that would be on the sign for us to have at the entry points. And like I said, we could work a lot of this details out with the city staff, you know, just, you know, but there's a, we'd obviously appreciate to be able to.
Can I ask, can I ask a question of Dino?
Yes.
What's, what is your kind of, I mean, I'm not trying to get too much into your business, but what, I mean, was Commissioner Gilliland on point when he talked about, you know, if we go to 50%, is that a, is that a deal breaker for you? You know, what, what's kind of the numbers there that you need? I mean, is what we talked about realistic? Or do you think that even if we did that, it would still be too hard for you to make a go of it?
What, Mr. Gill, Commissioner Gilliland and I discussed is reducing the capacity by 25%. What we, what the city manager and I discussed is reducing the VIP section by 50%. From that point on, we could, we could get with city staff and create barriers throughout the Band Shell to accommodate, we could reduce the VIP section by 50% and we could create barriers to accommodate another 25% reduction of the total area of the Band Shell, so that way we could, we could, we could, yeah, but obviously, there's going to be some people that are going to be sitting together who will, who are placing their chairs in that position. But we are willing to, it would not be a deal breaker to reduce the VIP section by 50% and to reduce the rest of the Band Shell area by 25%. It is not a deal breaker, and we're willing to do that. And we're willing to require the masks, you know, and we're willing to sell the masks to people at a nominal price, you know, who did not come with the masks. And like I said, and we will do temperature checks and everything, so, which I'm sure the bar that we were giving the scenario earlier did not do a temperature check for the people, because if you experience the symptoms of COVID-19, one of them is the fever, and anybody that has 100.4 will be turned away.
I understand the concern that some people are asymptomatic, right? So they may have, they may be carriers, they may be able to infect people but not showing the symptoms. Or imagine that's probably the problem.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I just, I said, I would imagine that the problem is the asymptomatic people, people who are not experiencing those symptoms but who may still be contagious. I don't know if you can be contagious and not have 104-degree or 100-degree fever, but, I mean, I think that's probably the risk.
And, but the other thing that, from all those things that I have read, obviously, in fact, there's, I get, I get a text message from a doctor named Dr. Angus, who's well-known in this area, and he says that there hasn't been a documented case in the outdoors of somebody transferring the COVID-19 from one person to the other. It has, it happened to be more, that's why the governor opened up the beaches and everything like that. Outdoor happen, and this venue that we're talking about, the Band Shell, is an outdoor facility. So I, like I said, I, you know, you know, even though we're here on June 17th, the event, if we were to do, if we were to honor the veterans and do everything that we want to do, it's less than a month away. And there's a lot of planning that has to happen between now and then. You know, obviously, I'm here hoping that you give me the green light, but with the condition that if things go bad, the city manager's in charge.
Can I ask a question, sir? So hypothetically, let's say we, we move forward with this. Somebody else comes along and says, I would like to have an outdoor event. And it's not city-sponsored, meaning we are, we are actually cosponsors for this, correct?
We are. On Fridays, the city does it, Saturday.
So somebody else we're not cosponsoring with says, hey, I'd like to do an event. You did it once, they're not, we're not cosponsoring with you. What would our answer be, given that we've done this? Given that we say yes to this?
I think it's a broad hypothetical.
Mm-hmm.
And in the broad hypothetical that you have, the permit would establish the same conditions that we're talking about here. And if we take the discussion tonight and we brought back a written operational procedure for you to approve, that written operational procedure would be attached as a requirement. And then we enforce the terms of the permit by any applicant that is permitted. That's what we've done consistently through the years, just depending upon the various events that have occurred. Also, we have a wait time for permitting, and we don't have anything pending that I'm aware of at the moment for the Band Shell, other than the city shows. We do have a large group of Marine Corps veterans coming latter part of August. It's really a separate sort of thing, but you may remember, they appeared before the commission. And I know at the time, they had rented most of the rooms in Hilton for their gathering. Separate thing, not in the Band Shell, it's nearby, somewhat similar, and that's a pending event. Which we don't really have permanent authority over that at the moment, for very limited things.
And how do we enforce this with them? I mean, I'm good.
I think, I think you make a very good point. If we're either open for business or we aren't.
Yes, sir.
That's really what it gets to. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna have our show there, someone else is going to have the ability to come in and do a show, too. And have to go through the permitting process. A lot of these issues can be addressed, but we normally would not say it's just us, nobody else.
That's true.
It's everybody.
That's my first compelling argument. Well, it kind of pains me, Dino, because I share Senator, I mean, Commissioner Gilliland's sentiment as it relates to this. And you and I met, and I really wanted to find a way. Because one, I know how hard you work, and I know how much the community wants this, and we are opening up in so many other ways. But I, as it relates to the city's involvement, I concur with what Commissioner May is saying because I'm, I'm the person tonight who's saying that people have to come into city business buildings with masks on.
Can I make a suggestion? Can you just grandfather in all events that have already been permitted? Because we, we've already come before you, we've already, you know, made the application, we've already been accepted. We're, what we're doing is we're.
I understand that, but for me, that's a principle. And then there's no, there's no principle. I think that's where she's, that's the part of her argument that I agree with. We got to have some.
Okay, because we're also talking about the Fourth of July, too, because the governor's order went through July 11th, I mean, July 7th. And that's why we pushed off the Fourth of July. We're hoping to reschedule the Fourth of July to honor our country Labor Day weekend. And, you know, if we start pulling the plug on everything, it's just, you know, it's going to be gone. And I would, like I said, a cautious thing to do is know, know that we will do whatever it takes to make it happen, and if things don't go the way as planned, you could always cancel it. It's just that we have, we at least have the green light to get started. And I guarantee you, between now and then, things are going to go fine. I mean, I think we've taken the precautions that the COVID-19 experts have asked everybody to take. I mean, Disney World is opening, Universal is opening, everybody's taking precautions just like what we're doing. And we're not any bigger than Disney or Universal. We're much smaller, you know? So that's why I'm, I'm just saying, you know, and those are outdoor venues and with rides that go inside of a facility. So they, they have it a little bit more complicated. Ours at least is an outdoor venue.
My only concern is that, I mean, Disney is in the business of profit and entertainment, and they have to, I mean, they have their shareholders, and they have to reopen. I mean, we're a city, our primary purpose is not entertainment or profit, it's safeguarding the welfare of our citizens. And so that, I don't know, do we have any liability? I guess we probably have our sovereignty and all that, right, for operational decisions like that? Do we have any liability if, can a citizen say, well, you know, the government, you know, opened it up, so I thought this would be safe or different? Are we having kind of exposure there? I'm just thinking, Mr. Jagger, do we have any, are we, are we still immune for all kinds of, is that an operational decision or whatever it's called?
Causation would be very difficult to prove.
Okay. I just think, you know, I hear what you're saying. I just think we're in a, as a city, we're in a much different position than a, you know, than Disney World or something like that, that obviously they have, they have to get back to their business as quickly as they can. Like all of us in our own businesses, we're trying to get back to business as quickly as we can. But as a city, I think we have to look at the, you know, slightly different, slightly different metrics. And there are lots of businesses that are still not able to operate. I mean, the courthouse, they're still not letting people in. The courthouse is still, you know, shut down in large measure. So, you know, that's, I'm just concerned about, you know, I just, I don't, I'm afraid the risks outweigh the rewards at this point. But, I mean, if there was a concrete plan that everyone thought was efficient, I would, you know, be happy to consider that. But right now, I just feel like I can't, I don't think the risk justifies the reward going forward.
Would you like to revisit the, this thing on July 1st?
Sure.
Okay. If that makes the commission comfortable, you know, I guess I will tell the, I just don't know how many bands are going to end up bailing as a result of this. And then if that starts to happen, I don't know if we could put the season together. I don't know what to do.
Okay. Well, we will revisit it, I'm, I'm doing it on July 1st.
Okay, so this will be an agenda item?
Well, whether it's agenda or not, we, we, we will do it.
We'll happen to the conversation.
We're not going to, we're not going to hide from you.
This is a very.
We love this agenda.
I know that. And I know you guys, obviously, everybody here is patriotic. Everybody wants to see us celebrate the Fourth of July. Everybody wants to see us honor the veterans. It's, you know, it's just, you know, but I, but. Everybody wants to see us celebrate the Fourth of July. Everybody wants to see us honor the veterans. It's, you know, it's just, you know, but I, but if we have to wait till the First of July in order to do this, we'll do that.
This is a very fluid situation, you know? As things go up and down, I mean, if, at some moment, who knows what happens at a national level, that everybody has to be responsive again. So, yeah, July 1st is, we'll see what happens then.
Okay, I'll see you guys July 1st. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
I, do you have a question, Mr. Jagger, about permitting or Mr. Morrison? So, the question is, if somebody has bars, let's say, they have a private facility, if they have an event-
Would you say it again, something, if, I missed the words?
Sorry, if bars?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a private facility, it's not a city-owned function. Let's say their capacity is 100, and they go to 50%. Because they're a private entity, and because they're abiding by the, by the percentage of occupancy, they can do what they want, correct? Bars, restaurants, whatever, as long as they're-
If it's consistent with the orders in effect at the time that they do the thing.
So it's, if it's private property and you're within your threshold, then it's, it's private property, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's the executive orders that are in place, whether governor or city commission is the way it's worked.
Good, thank you, sir.
And we don't have a yes or no position on that, it's those rules.
Okay, then, thank you, sir.
We're gonna move on to our final item tonight, which is 10F, the discussion item on the advisory board, and I believe Chief Capri was going to present.
I'd like for the chief to go just give a brief report on this, on the stats that we have in the city.
Craig Capri, police chief. We have a little presentation for you tonight. Citizens Review Board, Advisory Board Presentation. Before I start out, a, a police department can only be successful with a partnership with the community. That's the key component. But equally, it can't be successful without the support of the commission, the mayor, the city manager, and city staff. I think we have that here. We wouldn't be where we are today with what's going on in the country if it wasn't for you all. So I thank you for that, for what you've done for us. You've told us no on anything, and I think you understand what we're trying to do here. We're trying to have a safe community, a prosperous community, a community that respects the police, a police department that respects the community, a diversified workforce, and you're gonna see here in these next couple of slides some of the things we've done, some of our initiatives. So what are our values? Not showing on that one, right there, okay? What are our values? We are dedicated to enhancing public safety and reducing the fear and incidence of crimes. That's our main function. We recognize that people in the community are our most important customers, and we value them. We show empathy to, for victims of crime, and we treat violators of the law with dignity, respect, and fairness. I can't let the actions of a murderous cop, and I don't even want to call him a cop because he doesn't represent the profession, or a few bad cops in this country, I'm not gonna let them define what we are here in Daytona Beach, I'm not gonna let them destroy what we've built over decades to get where we are today. So that's not gonna happen. We shouldn't be associated with that, and we're not, we're not, we're not gonna let that happen here. They're more than words to us. It's embedded in the DNA of this police department. It's 24/7/365. From phone calls at 1:00 in the morning, from a noise complaint, to somebody calling the next day because they're having some issues where they need groceries. We, we handle a wide array of calls to a robbery, it's, it's a wide array, we're very accessible to the community. As we continue on with our values, we exercise integrity in the use of power and authority that have been given to us by the people. We demonstrate honest, ethical behavior in all our interactions with the community. We believe that each employee of DBPD needs to be a leader in his or her area of responsibility, making sure our values become part of the day-to-day activities. And we're gonna get into that a little bit later, you see the training and transparency in everything we do, putting this all together. You'll see how it comes into place here in a few minutes. What are our values? We recognize that our employees are our most important resource. We encourage our employees to submit ideas. Not one person knows everything. You'd be surprised when you put it out there and get input from your employees, what you can do and what you can accomplish. Game changers. It really is. We listen to their suggestions and help them develop to their maximum potential as they develop in their careers, from when we start these officers out as rookie officers, as they go on through their career, to build that muscle memory, to build that, that integrity, you know, and to build the, you know, to mold great police officers that can then pass that down. We strive for continuous improvement in the way we provide service to the community. We're gonna talk about some proactive measures that we've implemented. And I gotta thank Sheriff Chitwood at the time for this, because he was the chief. He implemented, we were the first in the state to get body cameras, in the state of Florida. And initially, and it wa, I wanna say it was a lot of, it wasn't a lot of resistance, people just didn't understand what, what body cameras were. We're the first one in the state, and for that part, mostly the country. Now, it's like going out, out to work without your gun or your badge. It's, everybody loves it, they bought it, we had buy-in immediately, and now everybody, they, they feel like they're not complete, in complete uniform without their body cameras. We also, going back eight years ago, our SWAT team has cameras. And in the industry, industry, excuse me, industry standard, a lot of SWAT teams around the country don't have cameras. We have cameras on our people. That way, if there's any questions or any issues, we can immediately go back and look at the videotape. The video's gonna show the story. But we've been progressive in those areas. The biggest thing we've done is, is about three years ago, we introduced de-escalation training and policies, the ICAP program through PERF. We had Lieutenant McBride go up to New York, and we were, had one of the, like, it's a 30 or 40 officers from around the country that developed, that framed this model, that built the program, and now it's, it's a, it's a national model used by agencies all around the country. And basically, when I'm talking de-escalation, you may have a lot of, when you, when you get sworn and you put this badge on, you get this gun, it's a huge responsibility. You have the right to take somebody's life legally, although we don't want to do that. That's an amazing power. And that power can, if that power's abused, I mean, it just, you, you hold such great power, and you have to, you know, be responsible with that power. So, for example, I'm gonna give you a scenario here. You have a gentleman in his house, in and out the house with a knife. Can you go up there justifiably, if you respond to the call, and use deadly force? You can. You can, you probably could, if you escalated the situation. Why are you running in there with a guy that's, sit and wait it out? He's only a threat to himself, he's not a threat to anybody else. So, police, and when you're, when you're policing, you police smart, you gotta constantly make decisions in split seconds on how to react to situations. And the only way you can do that, the only way, is through training and muscle memory. So it becomes second nature, and that's what we instill here. So, de-escalation is, is, we've had several incidents over the last couple of years where we would've been justified shooting, taking somebody's life, but the officers didn't do that, because number one, they don't want to take somebody's life, okay? Nobody wants to do that. Safety of your life is important. Number two is, they had an option where they could de-escalate, and they used those things. They didn't rush in, take that tactical pause for a second, slow down, let's see what we got. If we have to sit here for two days, we'll sit here for two days. Eventually, they're gonna give up, or unfortunately, maybe take their own life. But if they're not a risk to anybody else, especially with a lot of this mental illness going on now, where nobody's, everybody's passing the buck with mental illness, nobody wants to do anything, we're, we're stuck with it out there, having to deal with it firsthand. So, it's huge. It's that de-escalation training, and, and a lot of departments are just starting that now. There's still departments in this, in the state of Florida that don't even have body cameras now. I don't understand it. I don't understand it. Cultural diversity, ethics, and bias training for all officers. Every year, we do that. We, we bring instructors in, Chester Wilson. We bring him in, he does every year, trains the whole entire department on cultural diversity. Every year, everybody goes through it, because you can't get enough training. You gotta keep getting that training as things change, things, Dr. Randy Nelson is also involved heavily with what we do. He come, we bring him in, he does training for our department. It's, it's, and that goes from the chief down, everybody gets that training. The use of unmanned aircraft systems, drones. We decided to get drones not to spy on people. It came into play when we lost the, the general, Mr. Cantrell, when he walked away from the assisted living facility, and we searched for three days for him, and we found him about three quarters of a mile away from the facility. What I mean, we were on foot, we had dogs, we had air support, we had volunteers, and we couldn't find him. I think if we had a drone and got it up immediately, we would've been able to probably find him, because it could fly near. And since then, we've been using it for, anytime we have a missing child, an Alzheimer's patient that walks away from an assisted living facility, we use it for traffic, to see where the traffic's coming in for the race week and bike week, we used it for that. Some, you know, SWAT callouts, very rarely we've used the drone. One case that comes to mind, we had, we had a burglary where a suspect fled from us. It was pitch dark at night, you couldn't see your hand in front of your face, we couldn't find the guy for 45 minutes. We put the drone up, in five minutes, the drone found him on the roof, and then we're de-escalating. We see where you're at, just come on down, we're not going anywhere. We waited, waited, and 10 minutes he came down, and he was arrested without incident. He wasn't injured, he wasn't hurt, and he was taken into custody, because the drone had the flare, and it could see the infrared, and we could see the guy standing on the roof. Couldn't see your hand in front of your face, but you can see the drone was showing everything. So, this is what we're using it for. We're leveraging technology for the betterment of, number one, the officer's safety, for the safety of the community, and, and to get that, catch the bad guys, so we don't hurt, hurt them. We have our public, well, accreditation. Every three years, we have accreditation process through FPAC, which is the Florida Police Accreditation. Now, we're doing it for accreditation this year, and we've had, we did a mock accreditation on our own a couple of months back, and we found a very few minor issues, like administrative issues, which we fixed. So we're, we're gonna go, you know, something to file that they didn't, very minor stuff, I'm not talking nothing major. We, we check ourselves to make sure we're in compliance. We were supposed to have another mock with outside inspectors, agency inspectors, but that had been canceled because of COVID, and now we're doing our, our, our actual accreditation's gonna be done virtually. So, with files and, and stuff, so we'll be getting accredited in October for this year, for another three years. Now, what that does accreditation is, it checks every policy and procedure we have and make sure we're, we're in compliance, down to dotting the i's and crossing the t's. We have, we've hired, and we've had for the last 12 years, accreditation officer, and their job is to make sure, on a daily basis, policies are getting updated, everything's in compliance, and that we're doing everything right. That accreditation officer does that. We also, including in that, is, is the, the staff inspector. We have a staff inspector that, he inspects, his job is to inspect everything we're doing as far as money counts, make sure money and property and evidence is, is there, randomly checking, pulling packages out and checking them, checking narcotics, making sure, randomly pulling packages out, making sure our narcotics are weighed right. He'll inspect the cash registers up front, making sure the registers are balanced out. He'll check the armory, make sure there's no guns missing, and do completed reports. All this stuff is documented in reports, to make sure, once again, another check and balance that we're doing everything correct. Public comstat meetings, use of, we, we have our use of force investigations, bias profiling reports, all on the website. I'm gonna talk a little bit later about some of these reports. All these reports, our use of force reports, everything is on the website for the last 10 years, you can go back and look at what we've done and get in detail, and look at the numbers and see what we've done. We're, I'll get to that, so, we also do our gun buybacks. We did three gun buybacks this year alone. Not as effective as I like, I think we have to start looking at some other options with that, because people are just turning in guns that they've had in the house, and it's not really the, we want to get the guns that are on the streets to be turned in, so we're gonna relook at that. We're gonna talk a little bit now about some of the youth and community projects we do, and I'm very proud of that. We've been doing that for years, and I can tell you with the, we'll start off with our Daytona 100 Bike Ride, which we do every year, and we give 100 bikes away every year at Christmas. So, we get as many bikes through the year and donate it to us, or we'll buy them, or we'll get used bikes that aren't really that, that dinged up and damaged, and we'll fix them, and then we'll give them out at Christmas, we let the kids come down and pick them up. Commissioner Traeger's been out there a bunch of times helping us out with that. We do Shop With A Cop at Christmas. This year, we, I'm gonna probably say we got 30 families taken care of, from some donors. We have some big donors in, in the community that don't want to be acknowledged, but they, they want to help out, they're not doing it for the credit, they're doing it because they want to help kids out during Christmas. We do the Amscop Bicycle Helmet Giveaway, the Christmas Toy Drive, where we, we get a lot of toys, toys for tots, and we get, and we're actually even delivering toys Christmas Eve and Christmas Day to kids that don't have anything under the tree. There's nothing worse than a kid not having a toy on Christmas. So, we make sure as, many kids get toys and, and whatnot for that. The Summer STEM Camp, which we did last year, which was a huge success, unfortunately, we had to cancel this year because of COVID, like many other things have been canceled, your previous discussion, I don't have to go any further on that. COVID has, has changed the way we live. Our annual fishing tournament, we do that every year, and we had, we had to cancel that. But we're looking forward to that next year. We do tutoring assistance, I'm donating money to that again this year, probably in the range of $25,000, partnering with Gib Danhauer, with Carla Kwan. He's been very generous to help after-school programs at Yvonne Scarlett Golden Center and other centers throughout the city where they'll do, working on kids with their homework and reading. Partnerships with local youth athletic programs, right now, we're involved in football, we're helping the Sharks out, we're funding the Sharks program for, for registrations. They're kind of a new pro, they've only been around a couple of years, and the problem, what we're seeing right now is a lot of parents don't have money to pay for their kids to go to football, and so we're covering the fees with seized money and forfeitures. We're also gonna give the Bucks, who's been established, probably $5,000, because they have been established for years, but we're gonna help them out with some registrations to offset some of their costs, too. We also have a boxing program starting down the street from your place, Commissioner. We had it all set, ready to go, then COVID hit. So that's just coming around, where kids will be able to go there and train at the gym for free. We're funding that also, boxing, keep the kids, and a good thing about that, it's right in midtown, and the kids can walk there or ride their bikes to it, they don't have to worry about transportation, and it's right there. Thanksgiving and Christmas food basket giveaways, we've done that every year, partnering with our, our business owners, we've given a lot of food out the last couple of years. Prescription drug buyback, where we're, we're taking the drugs back. We, also with Walgreens, and we have receptacles in our lobby and other places around the city where you can just drop your pharmaceutical medicine in there. Coffee with a Cop, we've done that for the last several years. Major Garvin, before he retired, started that, and it's a great program, we're, we're just trying to try to get back into that now, because COVID, once again, has slowed us down. Citizens Police Academy, we do that every year. Women's Self-Defense, we put two of those on a year to teach women how to defend themselves from being attacked. And Active Shooter Training for the Public. Dozens of events in elementary schools, reading, and I read every month to one of the nursery schools, and when we went there three years ago, the kids were afraid of the police, now they run up and hug and jump all over you, and just, that, that just changes the, the way people look at police as far as, you know, when they're young kids and they, they're afraid. You know, because I remember when I was a young kid, I saw the police, I, I ran, you know, I just, you just, you know. We're gonna show a short little video that was put out. You hit it from there, or do I need to hit it? Because I can't see where the, none of our officers put this together recently with everything that's going on, just to kind of put a show, show what the police are doing, especially in our community. I found out about it like three days ago, we decided it'd be pretty good for you guys to put it in. You guys got it over there? I, I can't. Guys, got it? We checked this before we started, by the way.
It's the nature of technology. Doesn't matter how many times you check, technology-
Bottom, bottom corner, there you go. Yeah, we'll go on. Okay, let's talk about some of, some numbers here. So let's go to the next slide. These are 2019 field contacts. A field contact is if you go on a call and you come in contact with a citizen for whatever reason. It could be a casual encounter, it could be for a trap, not a traffic stop, it could be for any, any reason you come in contact with somebody, whether you're in a call, dispatcher or whatnot. So we've had 2,141 contacts last year. Out of that, 35% are 758 were African-American, and 13, I'm sorry, 1,301 or 61% were, were white. Other minorities were 82, which was 4% for the total number there. And this is just some, some numbers here based on our data that we've, we've pulled and tracked from last year, last year. Next slide is traffic stops. In 2019, 1,088 or 34% were African-American that were stopped, 58% or 1,838 were white. Other minorities were, 236 stopped, a total of 8% for total number of traffic stops at 3,162. And I can give you copies of all this and access to all this stuff, I can send it to you and get, get it taken care of. Next one's gonna be traffic warnings. In 2019, we, we had a total of 519 warnings. Out of those, 179 or 34% were African-Americans were issued warnings, 291 or 56% were white. Other minorities were 49 or 10% for a total of 519 on traffic warnings. Trespass warnings. If you look here, African American was 28% or 882. White was 2,119 for 68%. Other minorities were 119 for 4% for a total, like I said, of 3120 on the trespassing. Now we're going to talk about internal investigations because sometimes you look at these numbers, you got to dig into them, you got to mine into them and look at them to see what the data is. And IAs can include everything from, you know, any kind of complaint whatsoever. We handled 78 last year of those complaints. We had. It could be anything. It could be a citizen coming forward. It could be something that was part of a call that we determined. It could be something from use of force. Everything comes into play in that. It's so broad, it could be anything. But actual citizens' complaints last year, we had nine. Nine citizen complaints from citizens that were valid complaints that were investigated, nine. Now, I was going to go back. We handled last year, we handle over 100,000 calls a year for service. We are the busiest agency by far in Volusia County and Flagler County. Last year was over 103,000 calls for service. Out of those 103,000 calls for service, we had, I think I said, we had the 78 complaints, but you look at the, and use of force was, we had 97 incidents of use of force out of 103,000 calls. We had 97%. I can refine those a little bit more too, to get into those. Two of them unfortunately were deadly force was used and we had to take the life of one individual last year and we never take pleasure in doing that. It's, sometimes it's unfortunate and it's, you know, you try to avoid that at all costs. But one thing I want to.
Can I ask you a question? When you have those complaints, do you note repeat offender?
Yes, we have an alert review. Actually, in that report I can give you and it's online, has every officer's name that had the complaint and what, how many complaints they had by it too, in that report. It's really comprehensive. Like I said, if you look at the complaints last year, we said we had the nine citizens' complaints and on the use of force was 97 use of force incidents and the 78 complaints. But now use of force can be a wide array of anything too. It could be, a lot of them are hands and feet. And when I say hands and feet, you might, get. Oh, can't even switch it over. Sorry. So a lot of it might be, you know, hands and feet, handcuffs, baton strikes. We had one baton strike last year. That's the ass baton, this right here. One time and it was a miss. Pepper spray, only two times they used pepper spray last year. Doesn't work sometimes, a lot of times doesn't work and most of the times it's getting on the officers and it becomes a hindrance for you trying to deal with that. The firearms, there's three incidents involving a firearm had to be used. And then you look at the handcuffing, 34 hands and feet. K-9, we had, you know, we had, last year we had 11 K-9 apprehensions. Five, five tracks. So you look at 16 incidents involving a K-9 dog itself, 11 were bites and five were just where they tracked and the suspect surrendered. So when you look at the calls for service and the sheer volume, what we're dealing with, we're talking small numbers here. The taser, I mean, that could be anything from, we had zero vehicle extractions last year where we had to actually drag somebody from a vehicle. I mean, let's talk a little bit about some other things that have been real hot topics here, I know is the chokeholds. I'm a state certified defensive tactics instructor, a state certified firearms instructor. We do not teach chokeholds. The state of Florida FDLE does not teach chokeholds in the academy. They teach you how to defend from it in case you're getting choked, how to get out of it. We don't teach it in the academies, we don't teach it at the police department. It's in our policy, it can't be used unless deadly force. And even then, I don't know how that would even come into play if you're using deadly force. There could be, I guess, a scenario where it could happen, but the chances of that are slim to none. Anytime you go for the head, neck or groin area, that's considered deadly force. Those are areas you stay away from. Those are areas you stay away from, you know? Now, there's times and incidents where it's happened where you might be aiming for a shoulder and the subject moves and gets hit and we had some, but nothing that would serious damage or injury or bodily injury or death. And I don't even know, you know, I'm just putting that as, because I've seen it happen before, but nothing where it was caused permanent damage or nothing like that and the intended target was a shoulder or arm. We track all this stuff on our blue teams. We have the alert review, which I told you about, if a certain officer has more than six incidents in a six-month period, it triggers an alert. We have to do a full comprehensive report on that officer and find out what they did wrong. And we've had a couple of cases in the past where we had an officer that had some issues that we had to send back to training. We've sent them back to the police academy. A lot of it's been for driving because they can't drive and they get in wrecks and it's like, okay, now we got to send them back to tactical driving and very few, I know two incidents where we had to send people back to the police academy for defensive tactics. And how degrading is that? I mean, it's like you're getting sent, but you know, I don't care if it degrades you, it's going to make you better and save you, we're going to do what we can. You know, we can't have any nonsense out here, especially with, you know, these chokeholds. Some talk came up with interceding in the actions of an officer, like for example, the incident in Minneapolis, you know, with George Floyd, where the officer was, you know, blatantly just committing murder on the officer. Why did, we have a duty here to intervene. If you don't intercede, intervene and stop that, you're just as guilty as, you know, the officer that's committing the crime. So we teach our officers, we train them, intercede, get involved and push them off. And, you know, you're going to save not only somebody's life, which is most probably, you're going to probably save somebody's career and then bring it to the, you know, bring it to your supervisor. And anytime force is used, a response to resistance report is completed and documented and it's recommended either training, discipline and whatnot. So I mean, it's, there's a lot of checks and balances in here and I'm proud to say we do a, we do a great job. Always can get better, not resting on our laurels of that, you know, hey, let's sit back down coast because we do things right. No, it takes a lot of work. This is a lot of work. It's sometimes 14, 16 hour days, it's phone calls, it's getting the community to understand that we're transparent. We release body camera video of shootings immediately. I just saw on the news today in New York, the mayor said, well, we're going to mandate now that they got to release it in 30 days. I go 30 days? Then I was reading an article in Chicago when they had the shooting, they didn't release that video for two years. Why do you think that people think that you're hiding something when you don't release body camera video for two years or 30 days? Hey, anytime we have a shooting or something like that, whoever, and if it's involving an African American or even, I call Cynthia Slater, I call, come look at the video. Right away, look at it. The video is going to show you what happened and if we did something wrong, we're going to admit to it, of course, we're going to try to fix it and do everything we can. We don't, but I'm, I'm, we invest a lot in training and training and training and training and training and running through scenarios and scenarios and scenarios and just kind of get them to the point where it's almost ingrained in them that they know how to act to these situations and when to use force and not use force. So I wish I could have shown you the video because there's a lot of good things, but I think you all know what we do and you all do a great job helping us do that. And to me, as a police chief, when you have the support of the community and the commission and the city manager, there's a lot you can get done. And at the end of the day, we have a great, a great community, a great city for it. When you have agencies coming to us asking us for policies on how you do drones and how you do de-escalation. The escalation was the huge, 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 long overdue policy that I'm telling you, it's saved a lot of lives here in Daytona Beach, a lot of lives, so. And then the last slide we have is to talk about what would you like a citizens' review board to do, what the commission would like. And these are just some ideas that we put out for you all to look at and decide which route you want to go. We reviewed several review boards from several agencies. And let's say Minneapolis had one, it didn't do too good for them. I'm just saying. We looked at Fort Lauderdale's, we looked at Ormond Beach, I didn't know Ormond Beach had one for almost 20 years. I had no idea. No idea till my accreditation officer, who's a retired Ormond Beach captain, told me about it. We got their policies, we took, and Bob did a great job, two week turnaround, unbelievable and got it done. And I think we got a pretty good, I mean, I think we need some more discussion on it from the commission, but I think we got some good points here. Seven member board review deadly force and excessive force resulting in serious bodily injuries. I want to add to that that FDLE reviews that also. So it's independent of us, FDLE is going to review that also. Board review completed. Yes, they will review, yep.
Sorry, chief, you said they do.
Yep.
Aaron couldn't hear me. Deadly force and serious bodily.
Yes, yes, they will.
So this would actually just, we're going to do our internal affairs review, FDLE is going to do a review and this would be a third review of the same incident.
I have no problem with that because we. The board, it's going to come down, you know, the findings on discipline and if you agree or disagree with the findings and then if you disagree, somebody on the board disagrees, it'll go right to the city manager, it doesn't even come to the police. That's another layer that the city manager will have it and he'll be able to look at it, you know? I think we've been. I'm sorry?
I think the state attorney's office also.
Yes, yes. A lot of times. There's a lot of times we'll send cases over that probably wouldn't qualify this and I sent to the state attorney and to FDLE to review. An allegation from, you know, a citizen that, you know, you know, it's probably not true, you know, it doesn't sound right, but you're not going to get a resolution on it and we got it fixed. One example was the gentleman last week, that's been fixed. Just because we were never notified about it. Edgewater was. So five years, this guy who's never been arrested ever in his life, has three felony charges on his record and just by doing a couple of phone calls, they're going to pay for it, the state attorney's office, and they're going to get that fixed and rectified where it won't be on his record. But had that not come to our attention, had we not looked at it, this guy could have went the rest of his time in his life trying to apply for jobs and can't get a job because he was wrongly picked out of a lineup and two days later, the victim changed her story and the police department in Edgewater, it wasn't us, never notified the family for five years. So this guy's applying for jobs and they're like, sorry, I can't hire you, you got a felony arrest or something he didn't do. So we fixed that and that's, that's by having the connections and relationships when you can pick up the phone and call a state attorney, hey, I need you to look, this is messed up, something needs to be done about this. So when you get, when the word gets out there, I mean, a lot of stuff's getting done just by extra stuff that the state attorney and FDLE are doing for us, looking at certain things, just to make sure. I'll answer any questions at this point in time.
Do you have any, I'm curious, I know that you have a good relationship with Sheriff Chitwood. Do you have anything that you're working with him? Because I know he's planning some things.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, it's great having Sheriff Chitwood there because when we need something, his heart's with Daytona, he helps us out. It could be resources, it could be people, it could be money, it could be buying technology. One example comes to mind was the Street Smart software, which cost about $90,000. Actually, I think it was more than that. I think it's 90, I think it was like 500 or 600,000 for the initial program, but he bought a license for every officer in Volusia County so they could all communicate together. We were going to try to get it for us, it was going to cost the city about 60 grand, but we were able to get it for him to do that. So he's, he's leveraging technology and not even charging it for us.
So I think that I had a conversation with him this week and I believe he's planning on doing something, which I think he's going to reach out to you. It's a, it's a community.
Yes, we already talked, yep.
And so that's in the.
We're actually meeting on that tomorrow at 2 o'clock. Yeah, we're doing some stuff with that. We're working with, bringing in Randy Nelson again, Dr. Nelson. So we're already, we're already working on that. He's in and out of the area, so we're catching him when he comes in and we're going to put another program together.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Actually, I have a question. How do you feel about an idea? It's just an idea. The idea is, think of it as decompression sessions. When I say decompression, I'm not sure if anybody's doing it, but I actually called around different police offices around the country, some retired, some living in other countries where I know. And I said, you know, give me some thoughts and ideas. And I told them of the things we're doing here and they said, you're doing lots of things. The thing that we discussed was, the idea is, officers have the ability as a wellness checkup to go in and talk to somebody. I said, once a year, because it's just great, once a year. They actually recommend it twice a year, once at Christmas and then once mid-year, only because there is such a high divorce rate, suicide rate.
Well, we lose more police officers to suicide every year than officers killed in the line of duty.
And so, I mean, all these factors impact decision-making ability and it's not a punitive thing, it's a wellness check of some sort. It's a checkup, it's a good.
Mr. Chisholm already got us a wellness committee on our police department. We have a wellness team, we have a sergeant, a lieutenant assigned to it, a captain and we're just partnered with a couple out of us, West Palm Beach, a husband and wife doctor that are donating nursing services to us. So it's a whole wellness program that when, even when the new people get hired, it's mandatory that their families sit in this session for two hours to understand. Thank you, Mr. Chisholm, for getting that for us because, let us do that. But that was where we did a two-hour session, it's mandatory. Your spouse, your family needs to sit in there and understand what the job's about and go through it. So you do all this wellness stuff and.
And so, Mr. Chisholm, is this a once, a one-time deal? Is this a yearly deal?
We do it all the time.
It'll be, that's fantastic. You're so good.
He gave us the idea, but I ran with it. But.
You're brilliant, Mr. Chisholm.
But no, well, yeah, we have, it's, you're starting to see this now in the industry, we're taking care of your employees, so wellness is a huge part of what we do.
I applaud you for that, that's excellent. Thank you.
It's a whole team. Thank you.
Thank you, great job. Well, we have before us two documents, I guess, does anybody else have anything else? Okay. We have before us two documents and before we look at them, I want to share something with you all that the chief alluded to. I think it's important that I share this because I don't want anyone to get the fact that I have brought this idea twisted in terms of my sentiments about our law enforcement here in the city of Daytona Beach. I've said this before, I think we have, I think I read, if I'm not mistaken, 18,000 police units across the country. And I don't know them all, I know a few of them, but I would put my force, our force against anyone's. And I firmly believe that with all of my heart. So I don't want anyone to get it twisted and think that I, this is brought in any way as a indictment on our past performance or our future performance. But I have said this before and I say it again, I firmly believe that in order for us to get better, we have to constantly find ways to be better. You can never assume that you are where you ought to be. And I think that there's room for improvement and we have to aspire to that. But I receive this very often, but I do from time to time receive negative commentary as it relates to law enforcement also. You know, so it runs the gamut, but that's the nature of life. I'm a school administrator, so I know that, you know, you're only as good as the last child or the last parent that you dealt with is the way I look at things. But recently, I had a situation where a parent reached out to me with a very lengthy email about a negative experience that they had had with police where their son was accused of a crime, I think it was an armed robbery or something down in Edgewater. And so Edgewater, he was from Daytona Beach and I didn't put all of this together from the email until after the fact. But she emailed me and because all of these events involving police nationally aggravated her home and aggravated her son and he's been experiencing PTSD since this happened to him more than four years ago, where police showed up, our police along with Edgewater, showed up at his house and took him out of, out and, you know, apprehended him, handcuffed him, took him to jail. He was in jail for two or three days because he was picked out of a lineup. Turns out he didn't do it, as chief said, he had this record on his record for three years or four years. And, you know, I contacted the mother, contacted the chief and shared the letter with him and he went out and talked to her and this was her response after he talked to her. My family would like to thank you, and this was to the chief, for your help and for sitting down and listening to our concerns yesterday. Our family only wanted for someone to hear our needs and understand what we have been going through. Our son told me before he left to go home, he now lives in Orange County, that, Mom, some of this anger is going out of my heart. And all, but he said some and that was a good thing for me to hear. She said, I had tears in my eyes because he has been angrier and depressed and I pray that anger would not get him into trouble. We just want to thank you again and if you try and help and nothing happens, at least we were heard. We will continue to fight for our son. And the fact that you now have, you know, we talked about this in between and you said that we would try and talk to the state attorney and this young man's life has been turned back around in this way. back around in this way. Never had any police report in his life, never had any trouble. This wasn't his crime. But this allegation and the fact that he was arrested has been sticking with him. But I get that. I know that that is a side of our police department, and I do get that experience. And so, we have two documents before us, and I hope we all have had a chance to read them. And, you know, I have my choice. And my choice is perhaps a stronger document, but I do believe that our residents are calling for even greater transparency. And I acknowledge that we are transparent, and I'm proud that these issues are before the public in the way that they are, and that they're on the website. And those are things that I will go out and personally, I will celebrate and share in my deliberations. But I also believe that, you know, even the second document doesn't give the commission any authority to say, we want this to be reviewed. I could not agree with that. I think we should certainly have the authority to review the procedures. The first document also is a little bit broader in its scope, and I don't think that we have anything to hide. And I do not want to be, and to me, what we're doing, it doesn't jeopardize our police, it doesn't give the board the authority to penalize anyone. The only thing that it's doing is giving a set of eyes, a set of lenses, to look at the situation. That's not lenses from within our own institution, it's not a government lens. It's great that FDLE looks at it, it's great that the state attorney looks at it, but we are a public agency. We are a public institution as a city. And I believe that the public, who are not assigned to our role, should have a role in reviewing what we're doing. And this is why I stand by my commitment to the first draft as presented by Bob. I understand the second draft, but for me, it does not meet the standard that I aspire to see our city rise to in this area.
Can I ask a question, sir? With regard to what you said, are these meetings held in the shade, the review, or is it public and can it be watched by citizens on television, closed circuit?
Every meeting, every document involved will be a public meeting and a public document. Whether or not it's televised is up to management, but everything will be in the sunshine.
Okay, so it's, we can then see it as citizens? Is that what you're referring to, sir? Is that what you mean, like the citizen involvement? Is that what you mean?
No, the board itself is a group of citizens who are reviewing the procedures, and they don't work for the government, they do not, you know, and that's what I mean by public, the public.
Well, I've looked through both of these and been, you know, trying to think, you know, what's the purpose of putting this into place? The second one, to me, is so redundant to put a fourth review on things that happened six, nine months ago. I don't think, this doesn't do anything for me. I don't, I don't know what the purpose of that would be. You know, the first one, I, you know, I'm certainly not qualified to serve on this board. I do not have the background in criminal justice, in the military, you know, to be able to judge whether or not somebody's use of force or their response to an incident where they potentially could have been harmed or killed. You know, for me to agree with something like this, there would have to be qualifications for people who would serve on that board. And I think seven was probably just picked because we always put seven people on boards. But I would go with about three people, and I would have qualifications, you have to have a background in something like the military. I actually, you know, talked to a gentleman that was a well-respected veteran in our area about his opinion, and, you know, he expressed concerns about having people that are sort of novices going in and looking at what are very technical responses, and whether, making a determination as to whether or not they're appropriate. So, you know, I think that if we don't have the right people on there, we're going to actually have the opposite effect, and it's going to reduce confidence in our police department because of the opinion that, you know, something was, you know, that was done was not, was not appropriate based on simple visuals. So, you know, my position is, the use of force, you know, deadly force or excessive force doesn't accomplish anything, being a force set. And this one's going to need a lot of work before I would agree to it.
Okay.
But I'm not totally opposed to it. It needs work to get it, or it's something that I think would be beneficial. You know, you don't wait until somebody dies before you put a change in this. You know, and I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, what you're doing, that you're trying to come up with a, and be more proactive and improve the three forces we already have in Daytona Beach. So I think there is something with the first one that I could get behind, but this isn't quite it.
Okay. Let me ask you something. From the ones that you reviewed, did they have those type requirements in terms of, what were their ordinary citizens? Do you recall?
So, yes, I recall, there's a wide variety, and I looked at many, many examples throughout the state and the country. If you look at the Fort Lauderdale example, which was the first one we circulated, they have three of the nine members actually law enforcement officers. You'll notice in the draft that I provided, it does require some police, law enforcement, use of force training. There are other models that have some combination of that, either background checks or additional training. So there is a wide variety in terms of the qualifications to be on the board. And frankly, that's a policy decision for you to make, it is to the size of the makeup of the board.
And Bob, the training that you're referencing is the two-hour training course?
It could be whatever training you decide is appropriate. The training that I provided in here, I actually pulled off another ordinance as a model, but there are more extensive training courses that would be available that you'd require.
To that, sorry. To that, I would add that I'm not opposed to it, but there are some refinements, and for me, it is having a board that stays the same. The constitution stays the same for two-year, three-year, four, I know you have staggered terms, but that, to me, is too long of the same influence, whether it's positive, negative. I, my, if we could, I would like it to be something where we have a pool of people who are eligible. As each position presents itself, it's randomly picked, it's like jury duty, but it's from a pool that's already been approved and vetted, et cetera, background checks, et cetera. And that way, it's more, there's a sense of not one mindset will prevail, because in groups, sometimes one opinion prevails, and everybody follows suit. And that, to me, is a dangerous position to be in. Also, sometimes the boards are, boards change, people change, experiences change, and this could also be traumatic. So, for example, if you're sitting on a board, listening to things over and over again, whether you agree or disagree, you start to develop a psyche that goes with that, it's secondary stress. So, you know, with respect to the people who are on the board, to have an awareness of that also, that they're keeping themselves in check also.
You're talking about version one and version two. Is the yellow one version two?
Yes.
Okay. Also, I'd like to ask the chief about how many incidents do they internal investigate per year, roughly?
It fluctuates. Last year, we had 78, some years, it's been 68. All that report, I gave a copy every year, usually between 60 and 80.
I think the highest was 120, was like from 62 to about 78. That was about that range.
It just fluctuates. It just fluctuates. There's no set amount of complaints. It depends year to year.
But Bob, both these ordinances would be a subset of that quota.
Yeah.
At your discretion, right. So, a common theme among all of these models from the various jurisdictions are some review of IA outcomes. So there are some models which have all IA cases reviewed. The draft that I provided has four categories of cases that would be reviewed, excessive force, false arrest, criminal misconduct, and unlawful entries. The one that was drafted by staff and outlined by the chief only dealt with excessive force involving a serious injury. So, again, a wide variety of cases that can be reviewed at your discretion. I tried to pick kind of a middle-of-the-road to hit the sort of high, the high-impact or high-visibility-type cases, and the chief's, of course, was more restrictive than that. So, again, up to your discretion as to which direction you want to go.
And the chief's is just deadly force and excessive force, and then he determines whether or not it's excessive, right?
The wording was deadly force or excessive force resulting in serious bodily injury.
The investigator investigates everything. The investigators investigate it, FDLE, and then when that's done, we decide to discipline.
Okay, here's what I'm going to say. I think personally that the review of deadly force and excessive force is probably going to be extremely rare, extremely, probably not something that we would even deal with maybe even once a year, I would say. So, to me, this doesn't do anything for anything that I feel that we would really need a constant board for. Now, my concerns as a commissioner, and concerns that I get from people who talk to me, don't really have to do with excessive force resulting in serious bodily injury. It's more so false arrest and excessive force and different things along that nature. I'm going to share some things that I've experienced that I never talk about in my family, just within the past two years, with my own children, and tell you why I feel this board is necessary and needs more than just excessive force. And I'm going to start just within the past two years, and I don't really talk about this, I've never talked about it, and I know Derek doesn't really like for me to talk about it, but I'm going to talk about it because I think that it's important that you all know what my personal experiences have been. And it starts two years ago, on my daughter's 17th, on her 18th birthday. Well, she was, she went to pick up her brother and sister from the movie theater, and my younger daughter left her phone, and she was trying to recover her phone, and the police officer wouldn't allow her to recover the phone. He said he was going to go get, recover the phone himself. Forty minutes later, she's still standing there in the parking lot, trying to get her phone. She goes in, they, and my other two children are still in the movie theater because their movie hadn't gotten out yet. She, the officer decides to, she and the officer get into it, he decides to arrest her, and he literally, he literally assaulted her, and I saw the video. I mean, he beat the crap out of my kid, and she's 98 pounds. She had just graduated, straight A student, never even gotten a referral her entire life in school. And another, they said it was an officer, came up, and he was helping to arrest her. Turned out, he was a plainclothes officer, she did not know who he was, and ended up, he wasn't even a plainclothes officer, he wasn't even with a department anymore, and here he is, beating the crap out of my kid and slaying her around. So, I think things like that need reviewing. Things like that need the opportunity for, to be heard and to, and after that, I don't even know what happened with the situation. I'm not even sure what happened. There was no real resolution behind it. Fast forward, so fast forward to about a year, a couple months right before that, my 14-year-old was at summer camp, and there was a kid in the neighborhood who was on, who was on a bike, he was on a motorcycle, and they thought it was my kid because it happened by my house. So I explained to the officer that it wasn't my child, that my child was at summer camp, and I said to the officer, I said, "Can I take you to the summer camp and show you that my kid is at summer camp? And you talk to the camp counselor, and the counselor can tell you that my kid has been at summer camp all day?" He says, "No, Commissioner Henry, we don't need to do that, we believe you." I said, "Because I don't want you to go to the summer camp and go up and talk to my child, and all of his friends are there, and you have counselors, and they're wondering why these officers are coming up to this 14-year-old, 13-year-old child." I said, "So I'd rather you go with me and you talk to the counselors yourself." So what happens after they said, "No need," they go right up to the school, and they go and talk to the counselors and check to see if my kid has been there all day. And even after finding out that my kid had been at camp all day, they found an old police report, and from the old police report, they found his name in it. It was an incident that had happened at our home, and they named all the children that were present at my home at that time. And so they picked his name because he was the closest to the kid, because he was a male, about 13 or 14 years old, and they put his name in the police report. And even after doing due diligence and going up to the police, going up to the school and talking with the counselors and finding out that my kid had been there all day, they put his name in a police report, and then when I talked to them about it, and after they found out that it wasn't him, they left it in the police report. My kid's name is still in the police report right now, to this day, and all I was told was, we can't make him take this out of the report. How can you not make someone take something out of a report when it's false information and you yourself have verified that that's not true? This is why we need review boards. And I'm going to tell you this last story, which happened about two or three weeks ago. My daughter, who is 19 years old, took my other son, my 11-year-old, to Krispy Kreme to get some doughnuts two weeks ago. An officer followed her all through these back streets, and she would, he didn't have any headlights on, and she was scared. And so, her aunt's house was right around where she was, so she figured she'd pull it. She didn't know who it was because he didn't have the headlights on, he didn't have anything going. She said she finally realized it was him because when she turned, she could see the light, the stripe on his car, that blue stripe that's on the car, that's how she realized it was the police. So she pulls into her aunt's house, and as soon as she pulls into her aunt's yard, the police officer turns on his lights. So he gets up, he comes to her, and he says to her, she said, "What's the problem? You know, why'd you pull me over?" And he said, "Well, you came to a stop, but your two front tires went over the white line at the stop sign." And we're in the middle of a pandemic. We had already talked about, officers really didn't need to be out, really just being out there like that unless it was an emergency situation, or you had a really rough situation, that we didn't need to be in the public space for their safety and for the public's safety. And he had no mask, and he pulls her over, and he, so he said, "Well, it's your first time, so I'm going to give you a ticket, I'm not going to give you a ticket, I'm just going to give you a warning because, running your record, I see that you don't have any, you don't have any history of ever being pulled over." Well, when I pulled up to the scene, I talked to him, he came back with a $166 ticket to a 19-year-old. And I'm thinking to myself, what is the purpose of us giving residents a break on their water bill if we're going to just turn around and give them a $166 ticket, talking about your two front tires went over the white line? So I said, "You gave her a ticket for that?" I said, "I wouldn't want any resident in Daytona Beach to experience that right now, not because it's me, not because it's my child, and not because I'm a commissioner, but because we're in the middle of a pandemic and because people are not working, they're not at work." I said, "And we shouldn't be treating our, we should not be treating our residents this way. We shouldn't do this right now. We're in the middle of a pandemic, now is not the time." And he said, "Well, I," he wasn't rude, but he said, "Well, I don't make the price of the tickets, that's just what it is." I said, "So..." He goes over then to the side of the car where my 11-year-old is sitting, and he flashes the light on my 11-year-old, and he says, you know, "I need your license." Come on now. Fortunately enough, my 19-year-old knew that you didn't need his license. So my 19-year-old says, "Excuse me, sir, you know, he's 11 years old, you don't need his driver's license, you're dealing with me right now." And then when the aunt came out of the house, it was a little different, you know, and then when I came up, he was a little bit different, but then another detective rode up. And so, he still came back with a $166 ticket. And when I talked to the chief and I talked to the city manager, and it wasn't that I wanted him to take the ticket away because I believe in my heart I can take that to court, and the judge is going to say, "This is really stupid," and we'll get some justice there. But what I'm saying to you is, these types of incidents happen to normal, everyday people. They happen. And so, when we talk about we're only going to have a review board that says we're only going to review deadly force, we need to be reviewing... going to review deadly force, we need to be reviewing how officers use their discretion. He knew he had the discretion to say, hey, it's your, he said that he was going to only give her a warning and then he came back with a $166 ticket. And we need to talk about how they use discretion and who gets discretion and all those things need to be talked about. And there needs to be a board that talks about those things. I've got four calls this month in my zone. I ran over, I met a new neighbor. I said, excuse me, sir. Welcome to the neighborhood. I'm your commissioner. If you need anything, call me. He said, I could have used you last week because an officer pulled me and my girlfriend over and they slammed us to the ground. And when they slammed us to the ground, he said they were looking for a murder suspect in a blue car. And I said, sir, we're in a white car. He said, and then all of a sudden, they just let them go, just like that. Nothing, just let them go. And all of these things, they need to be dealt with. And if you don't experience them, count yourself lucky. Count yourself blessed that you don't experience those things. But some of the people in our community are experiencing those things. I got a call yesterday from a man that said he stopped, he stopped yesterday and two young girls were in a car. And they pulled the young girls over and an officer got in front of the girl and one officer got behind the two girls. And the girls said that they were terrified and they, in the middle of the day, pulled them over and made them, guided them to the side like they had modern-day criminals because their back light was out. We don't need to traumatize our community. If we are going to have a good relationship with our community, we have to say, yes, 99% of our department is a wonderful department and we have the best police department in the world. And I stand behind that. But we also have to say, there is that small percentage that maybe we need a review board so that our community can feel safe and feel that there's transparency and that they trust us to do the right thing for them. Those are my stories that have happened within the past two years. If you have a daughter that's 98 pounds and you see this big man slinging her around, you will want a review board. If you have a 15-year-old son who, if you go pull up a record or something on him, it's going to say that he was in a place that he never was and there was never any justice for that child, you would want a review board. And if you had an 11-year-old child who's just sitting in the front seat of the car anxiously waiting to get home to eat his Krispy Kreme doughnuts hot, and he's got a light being flashing in his face and you know he's 11 because the doctor says he's underweight, and that officer is saying, give me your license, you would want a review board that does not just say, we want to review excessive force. You want a board that says, hey, let's go back and look at some of these things. Let's look and see if we need to, if we need to retrain these officers. Let's go back and see if, you know, if there are things that we can do differently, if there are policies that we can put in place that every single citizen feels like that their interaction with the police, whether they like that interaction or not, was failed. And that's where I stand. And that's why we need a review board that does more than this. Thank you.
Commissioner Delgado? Do you have a comment or?
Yeah, no, I was trying to turn off my mic. I've been, while I listen, you know, I do have to disclose that I have the contract with the police, defend the officers who are involved in allegations of excessive force or when there's on-the-job shootings and things like that. So, you know, I do want everyone to know that, that that's part of what I do. But that being said, I think, you know, there's obviously no harm in having another layer of oversight to all of this. There are, there's already a great deal of oversight, but I think the Commissioner Henry's point, it's preserved now for cases in which there's a fatality. And you don't know when you get into a situation, how it's going to end. You don't know when you fire that gun, is the person going to live or die? So I think that it's well-founded to worry about not just the most serious offenses, but the earlier as well. And certainly in my practice, I deal with a lot of complaints and a lot of people who feel they don't have adequate redress or they feel like that they're not going to be listened to. And, you know, they don't feel like they get any satisfaction through the Internal Affairs process or things like that. That's something that I deal with on a daily basis. And I certainly think that people would feel better if they had an opportunity to redress for not just, you know, serious injuries, physical injuries, but injuries to their dignity, injuries to their sense of propriety, injuries like the type of injuries Commissioner Henry are talking about that are, you know, traumatizing and heart-wrenching to hear and not something that a kid should ask to experience. You know, and I'm mindful that some of the things Commissioner Gillland said make a lot of sense, too. You have to have people who know what they're doing, who can evaluate the cases. You don't want someone who's going to rubber stamp one side or the other. So, you know, I like, I, but I want a more meaningful and more serious review board if we're going to put into place. I think it should review anything that a citizen is willing to bring forward, not just the very few cases that end in fatality. So I would be more inclined with, you know, what Commissioner Henry and the mayor have talked about as far as what I think is an appropriate thing to have as far as a review board. Because I think that it may also be an opportunity to stop something before it gets to that point. You know, there are probably signs and symptoms along the way if some, if an officer doesn't have sufficient training or an officer is going to be, you know, problematic if there's gaps in their training or their judgment. We want to pick up and check that when it's just maybe, you know, a bad attitude or a, you know, a rude comment or just a poor interaction with a civilian before it gets to the level where, you know, someone's hurt or their life's taken or, you know, they have a felony conviction that they don't deserve or something like that. So that's my thoughts. So I'm in line with, you know, the mayor and Commissioner Henry and what you guys just appropriate. That's where I would be in what I think is an appropriate citizen report.
I'd like to say something. First of all, let me just say thank you for even sharing because we don't hear that, we don't hear those kind of situations every day at this platform. Great stats from our police department doing wonderful things. But even as Chief indicated, there's a lot of power and responsibility that comes with that gun, that badge, the stick, the spray. There's a lot of responsibility that comes with that. And people have different values and beliefs based on how they were raised. And regardless of your good intentions, once you have that power, you may be on a power trip. So we need to be mindful of that, that we know we're not perfect. No one's perfect. So in saying that, believe it or not, our citizens have been asking for a review board for years. It's just that it hasn't come before us because I didn't, I didn't really think you all would be amenable to it. But now that we have what's happening nationwide and to hear from one of our own colleagues, how her family has experienced these traumatic experiences and young people, children, who should never have to experience something like that, I think that it's something that we seriously need to consider. I do agree that there need to be some professionals because like even on some of our other boards, a professional in the field is required, someone that can tell us whether or not that was excessive force or whether that conduct was inappropriate. But we still need citizens, too. Because when you think about, when you go to jury duty, I was on a jury duty for a murder trial. I didn't want to think about a gun and a bullet, but I had to look at all that stuff to make a decision on whether or not that man had killed that person. So you need common sense, everyday people who live their lives, who are concerned about other people besides just folks who are just perhaps governmental-minded. So I am, maybe we do need a little bit more tweaking, but I am not prepared to lay this paper down. I think we need to do something. What we're trying to do now is be proactive rather than reactive. We're saying that, yes, we've got a great police department. We don't want it to go awry. We want it to stay on track. And we want to be mindful of how we treat our citizens, how we treat them. I'm glad to hear about the wellness program. I'm glad to hear about the diversity, but still it's not enough. So you say, yes, it's another layer of evaluation. So what? It's another layer. It engages our citizens. It's transparent for them to see that we're not trying to hide anything. Some of the complaints that we've had that have never come before us, that are quite similar to what you said, need to be addressed. And I think our citizens need to have a voice in having that being said.
Do you, I, I mean, I mentioned earlier the concept of the jury pool. Do you like the idea of exploring having different people or do you want the same people who sit on the board for X amount of time? Because that I'm opposed to. Because sit and listen to things long enough, it does create.
Well, you've said it about us. We've said it for four years.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
You know.
100% we do.
PDs and co-divorce, you know, land.
The difference is that we deal with a diversity of issues. We deal with a host of things. It's not just focused on one area. One area focus is different because that's all you're going to see and hear.
Well, I identified four areas of concern.
Sure, but it's still four. We deal with a plethora in an entire city. That's what we're dealing with. This is four. So it becomes very focused.
And I think focus.
My concern is having the same people on that board over and over again. That's my concern.
Well, I would limit perhaps the length of time that they were there. But I don't necessarily know, I don't know if we could find a pool per se of individuals. And as their terms come to an end, then we perhaps have other people that could replace them. You know, I could look at a two- or three-year term on being on this board.
As drafted, three-year stagger term.
Three-year stagger term.
Yeah, well, we don't have term limits, but I understand your sentiment, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
Sorry, one thing, in the Florida bar, like a lot of professional organizations, we have our own internal system and we're regulated ourselves. And I think we're regulated pretty strictly. Doctors do the same thing. So we have a grievance committee, that's as a probable cause committee. So a citizen makes a complaint against the lawyer. Every complaint comes, anyone can make a complaint about any lawyer at any time, pretty much anything, the lawyer has to respond. It goes to Tallahassee to have to answer. Then it goes, even if they don't think it's, you know, likely, they extend it to a local branch office where the branch office investigates it. They can then ask for guidance from a committee in that, in that lawyer's kind of region. There's like, say, there's like, I think 13 or something people on there. There's the investigating member who shows them and then there's like some laypeople, there's some lawyers on there. And then there's kind of like, say, two or three people who will investigate the case and then present it to the others. And the people that investigate don't get to vote. But I think there's ways of coming up with something that addresses Commissioner May's concern, kind of has a people maybe doing, you know, maybe they were engaged and presented to the other people so that you get kind of different people kind of doing the investigating and you kind of shift up viewpoints. You have the benefit of a larger group of people, a mix of different backgrounds, some experts, some laypeople, some, you know? So I think there are some pre-existing ways of kind of doing that, that get around the same three people or four who are doing something every time, because you might be able to assign a certain group of people to review and present back. And then the littler group don't necessarily get to vote, so that kind of takes them out, makes it a little bit more neutral. But I think there's some, I think there's some methods that we can look at that'll accomplish and address Commissioner May's concern about the same people, you know, looking at the same stuff over and over again, but also give us the benefit of some expertise while still allowing, because I agree with Commissioner, there has to be, there has to be the average person on that jury. There has to be the community voice. And that's, that's the whole point of it. So I, something like that may work. And I think there's lots of other, I think there's some organizations and some models we can look at. I don't know if that would address any of your concerns, Commissioner May, if you have like different, kind of take the, you're headed and kind of report back. Do you have like maybe a mic, a focus group within a larger pool of people? Thank you.
Well, you know, I respect that, but I think we're underestimating our board members, you know? And just like we sit up here and we make decisions and we listen to, you know, I listen to John Nicholson. I've been listening to him for over 10 years. And tonight, he made me mad. But many, 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 many times, he said something that I went home and researched. You know? And I will listen to him when he comes back in two weeks. And what he said tonight, I really won't remember it because the other half a dozen times that he's made me mad, I don't really remember why he made me mad. So, and I'm not, I just believe in, I believe in people. I mean, just like I believe in juries. They don't always get it right, but I do believe in them. And I believe we can get a group of people who can serve on a review board and do a good job. I just, I don't know that we need a pool of 30 people. I don't know that we'll find that either, or even 20.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. What I was saying was just from that group might want to have, can probably want to have people go out and do some fact-finding for the group. And so it's kind of alternate who those people are within the group that make it a little bit fresh. If, you know, just for example, if we were the city commission here, maybe one time when I investigated an issue and presented it to the other four or five, well, then another time it was another two commissioners who investigated. Just so that the kind of, if there is a fact-finding or, you know, you got to interview complainant, you got to interview an officer, if that's kind of shifted along in the group, then it might keep people fresh. That's, that's what I was suggesting, might be a way to not have the same people doing the same thing every time. It might keep things a little bit fresh and take responsibility off one person always have to, one viewpoint or always have to do the thing. That's, that's kind of what I was suggesting might work if just in the group, you kind of rotated some of the duties of fact-finding and the people who are doing the fact-finding don't necessarily vote or, you know, decide what the recommendation, that's what I was suggesting. I wasn't necessarily saying we need a huge pool of people, just that we could rotate the tasks in the group to keep it a little bit fresh. Thank you.
Well, Bob, they would, explain to us how it works because that's, it wouldn't work where they had to do research.
Right. So, yeah, the, the concept here is that it's a review board. So they're reviewing policies and procedures and they're reviewing IA outcomes. And then they make a recommendation only to the police chief or to the manager, depending on how you want to draft it. But there's no independent investigatory authority. In other words, they can't subpoena people to come in and testify before them. They are simply looking at public records and making a recommendation to the chief.
Something that, that you could do on your own essentially without our blessing. Like if you establish four people outside of the community and they look at all of our IA outcomes, but I think we should have our own. And it doesn't bite the officer. That's something we have to remember. Doesn't really impact them. It's not going to increase our, well, rescue me if I'm wrong, it's not going to increase our likelihood of being sued. I mean, it's just, this is not a bad, there's no bad outcome from this, from my perspective. I don't see a bad outcome.
Well, just as Chief indicated, sometimes he has to send the officers back for training for other things. It may be one, it may be attitudinal. There may be something going on in that person's life on why they reacted or acted the way they did on that particular day. They may need some of that wellness sooner than wellness would normally come around. But I think it's going to help us to identify if there are any bad apples and to try to save those bad apples.
I have no issue with the citizens' review board. My issue is going to be with the length of time. I don't, I don't want to have a static board as it relates to disciplinary action with police officers because everybody has had an encounter with the police. There are no positive encounters with the police. There are encounters where somebody says, I give you a warning, you know, I'm helping you. But the person says, oh, my gosh, I've been victimized, meaning I was stopped, I was speeding, I was stopped. But you somehow feel like you weren't speeding, right?
That's not true. I was speeding, I knew I was speeding.
And so you remember these things. These are, and that's a mild one. A traumatic one is a traumatic one that impacts the entire family, not just one person who experienced it, the parents. It stays for a while. It impacts a generation in terms of how they perceive the police. You take that person, put them on a board and say, okay, go ahead and make a decision here. That is a tough call. We've all experienced it. I mean, you have to have some deep training, which you have, sir, to be able to put aside a personal experience that you have and then make an objective. a personal experience that you have, and then make an objective decision. That takes your counseling training right there, to take yourself outside of it. Not everybody has that experience. Experiences stay with you. That's my concern.
Well, I, I, I can't disagree with that. So would you be agreeable to a board that had term limits and then you rolled them out? I'm trying to figure out.
Frequently, frequently, frequently rolled them out.
Define frequently.
I, I would need a little bit more research on that. Because I know something like this exists. I mean, we, we mentioned the phrase jury. Every time there's a trial, it's a new jury. They wouldn't have the same one every single time, right? That's what I meant by a pool of people. People, A, willing to serve, who want to be in that position.
Well, we have difficulty putting people on our regular boards that don't require this like in-depth thought. So I don't know where you're gonna find a pool of people, but I think there needs to be some type of term.
But this seems like it's a pervasive enough issue that many people would have an interest in it, right? To want to serve in this particular capacity.
The people that I'm thinking of are, are people that I hold in high regard and believe could serve.
Now.
I just, you know, I believe they could serve with fidelity.
But one thing I, one thing I, I question is, don't have, um, for the members who ask questions. I'm not saying they need the power, but if they're not able to, if listen to the, if we didn't hear Commissioner Henry's comments firsthand, but we read a synopsis prepared by somebody else, I don't think it would have the same impact. And so, you know, I, I, that's why I think there needs to be some, you know, there, they shouldn't be, you know, private investigators or, you know, issuing subpoenas. But I, I, I had always thought for it to be a really meaningful board, um, and to provide any kind of, um, opportunity for the community to kind of, you know, they, they probably get opportunities to someone, even if just one member, who gets the perspective from the different people. So I had always thought that to really, um, to make it more meaningful, there should be some opportunity for people to address their grievances, um, to someone who is not part of IA chain. Because I, I think the concern would be that, that they would get, uh, their voice would carry through that process. So that's something I think we should consider, is, is there any benefit to having, um, an opportunity for the complainant and the officer or whoever to be heard by someone who's a part of that board? Because I think hearing and judging the credibility and demeanor of a person is an important part of decision-making, that you would lose out if you just review the written word. So, as we talk about things to do, that would be my, my request, we consider that there's probably value in that level of fact finding. Thank you.
Yeah, and I have to say, we, we run into some conflicts in that situation, so, um, I've looked into that legally and would have some reservations, uh, which we can discuss further if you'd like, but, um, but you've got unions involved, you've got the Policeman's Bill of Rights, all which regulate, um, internal affairs investigations. And that's the reason why most other jurisdictions don't give independent investigatory authority.
I mean, I, have we already come to the, is it already in our, in our guidelines, bylaws, et cetera, that when we have meetings, they're public? So residents have the opportunity to watch the meetings, whatever happens, reviews, um, publicly, correct?
Typically, for our board meetings, they are televised, yes.
That's number one. Number two, anything that is going on in terms of, uh, any filings, discretionary, they're already gone through a process, that information is already online, apparently.
Once the IA case is closed, that becomes a public record.
Okay, you're ready.
And of course, all of our policies are public.
Okay.
I'd like to know what Chief feels about this.
I already know. He doesn't want it.
Oh, did he say so?
Yeah, this is, this is.
Oh, this little yellow one?
Hi, Craig Capri, Police Chief. Not opposed to it at all. I think we're moving a little too fast, you know? I, I, I mean, I, I, I hear you, Bob, two weeks. I mean, sometimes I try to get things, I can't even get it for two months. I'm just saying, maybe this is a serious, serious thing here that needs to be tailored towards Daytona Beach. We're not Fort Lauderdale, we're not Jacksonville, we're not New York City, we're not LA. This needs something, maybe a workshop where you could sit back, let's figure out exactly what we need, put it together, and make it happen. Not opposed to it at all. I know what we do, you know? We're doing everything, you know, like you said, I mean, sometimes perception, people's perception might be not exactly what exactly happened, and maybe when other eyes see it, I'm not opposed to it. We got nothing to hide, we're transparent. We are probably the most transparent police department that I can think of in this area. So, come down, look at all the files, we'll put it all out. I mean, so, I'm not opposed to any of that. And if, and you, you'll probably get some good things out of this. You might get some good ideas.
I, I don't disagree with you when you say we're transparent, because I've seen that.
But we're moving too fast.
I've seen you call the folks in to look at the body cameras. I've watched body cameras at four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And I've walked away saying, there ain't no way in the H-E double L I would do that job. So, you know, I stand by that. I've seen too many things that make me know that being a police officer is not for me.
I don't think anybody's opposed to it, but I think we're just too fast, we're just grabbing somebody's policy and cut and paste it. I think we need to.
We're, we're, my guess, two months from now. I mean, this is, we're not.
No, I'm just saying, you might want to make sure you.
Everyone's got their own opinion of.
All right, I didn't.
Get to that, that middle ground where it's all.
I'm not two months, but I'll let you stand with that, but I'm just, two months. I, I'm, I'm engaged.
Yeah.
This is something that, that we need to be engaged in. And I used the word the other day, immediacy. Because if you, if we, we need to be proactive. So I don't, I don't need to round something down our throats.
Yeah, yeah.
But we need to study it, and we just need to engage in it and make a decision. You know, and that's just where, I, I'm pretty much that way on most things anyway. I don't, I usually don't come in here and tell you guys that, once I'm ready to do something, let's just slow roll it, because I don't.
We want things to work right.
The, my two-one thing is, we're gonna have this on the agenda for our second meeting in July. I mean, our, our first meeting in July, and we're gonna have another discussion. And then our second meeting in July, we're gonna be ready to, to go with something, and then we're gonna adopt it at two meetings in office. You know, it's not, it's an ordinance, it takes two readings.
And then we have to decide on, on how the board works, exactly, and.
That's what we're doing right now, you know?
Who the board is going to be, what it's going to consist of, what it looks like.
That's why, you know, it's, you have the pool idea, which I think has a lot of merit, but I, I do share some concerns.
Sure.
About having a pool large enough that we could, you know.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. Um, the, uh, you know, this is a significant commitment. I mean, you're talking about probably one or two days of people's time to review one IA case. You know, I mean, this is not something that, that, you know, um, you know, what I was thinking through my mind was, you know, a board of four people, two of them who have certain qualifications, we've got colleges, universities here that have, have, uh, criminal justice departments. You know, professors from, from those areas would be somebody good, somebody, you know, somebody in the military. So a couple of people like that, and a couple of people that are, you know, more, you know, run-of-the-mill citizens. You know, I mean, that, that would be something that might, you know, I don't, you know, it's gonna take us a while. If we screw this up, we're gonna destroy fifteen years of all the work that Chitwood started and Capri has done to build trust in our, in our department. If it turns into just an opportunity to bash the police department.
I agree.
And, and say, IA got it wrong, IA got it wrong, IA got it wrong, every time they look at one, then, then that's gonna be a problem. That's why we gotta get it right now. What we're talking about, I think would work, but it can't, it can't just be, oh, we're gonna get one person from each zone. That, that isn't, that doesn't make any sense. You know, I'm not even sure we need, we, we need more than a couple, you know, maybe, I think one of those people maybe, maybe could come from outside of Daytona Beach. You know, if we found somebody, a professor, a Bethune Goodman that we want to put on the board, they live in Mormon, I don't want to exclude that person from the board. You know, maybe if you do a principal of business or, or resident. You know, but, you know, I, I think there is something that we can all agree to here, um, and it's not the deadly force, excessive force one, um, but it, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a bunch of work.
We need a diverse board to represent a diverse community.
One hundred percent.
We need a diverse board.
Age.
That represents a diverse community, not just throw some military people on here and, and you're, you've got this. No, I, I don't really care if you don't have a, a college degree, or if, if, I, I feel that there are good enough people in the community that can come and serve on these boards.
And that's perfect, half the board, that would, that would be fine. You know, but the other half, I think we need to be people that have some, are in some background in, you know, law enforcement.
I mean.
Kind of split the baby.
Age, race, diversity, uh, gender, all those things come into play in many, many different incidents. So there, that certainly changes it, um, in terms of makeup of the board. So, yeah, this, the developing that will, will take some, some time.
I think it might take two months at the rate you guys are going. It's, it's just, it won't take me two months, but we may take us two months, because we're not, we're, we're obviously all over the place. How many people were on the normal board?
Seven.
The one is drafted, had seven members.
Okay.
On three-year terms, which would be staggered, meaning they would rotate every year, so that you would constantly have an influx of new members on a yearly basis.
But I mean, is there a reason that we chose seven as opposed, is just because that's what we normally?
It, it could be higher or lower. That was just, again, kind of a, a middle number from the examples I've seen.
So it was a middle number from the examples you've seen.
There are boards like the Fort Lauderdale, again, had nine members. So, um, it, it could be whatever number you pick. Generally, you want an odd number, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
But other than that, uh, it could be three, it could be five, it could be seven, it could be nine, whatever you determine.
What do you mean they rotate annually, Bob? Sort of like, well, we do one, three, five, I mean, you just take certain ones?
Sure, so that, so you don't have a rollover at three years. Everybody doesn't roll over at three years. Stagger the terms so that they're, you're filtering in new members, um, as they term out, and not all at the same time.
Mm-hmm. I like the criminal justice professor suggestion. I also would like to suggest maybe somebody in the medical field that can tell us whether or not, you know, excessive use was used. Maybe even a retired cop that would probably know whether or not, um, that was the method that should have been utilized, something like that, when we start looking at the makeup, you know, just that diversity of the board and the, the gender.
Any type of person on there? Don't have that type of person?
No, um, it's at-large appointments as it's drafted. Uh, there's no particular requirement, other than they go through the, uh, training, which is established by, uh, the manager.
But just something to think about.
You had that. They, they had that in the other one. I confused. Okay. The other one had that type of language.
Certified defensive tactics instructor, that's trained.
I think that's the professional that you need. I think that's the professional that you need.
Yeah, somebody that's.
Certified.
Yeah, somebody that's associated, not associated with the police department, that's a certified instructor.
They'd be rid of the.
Find somebody that can come in and just explain the FDLE guidelines and policies. It's somebody like, okay, what does this mean? And he can explain it to the board.
And we all agree that we need that person?
Yes.
So, so each board member would go through a two-hour course with that individual?
Well, I wouldn't say that, but no, it would just be like an orientation for everybody.
No, I'm sorry, the question was?
The, the, I, the two, the, there's a two-hour training that, uh, board members would have to go through related to, uh, something, I can't remember exactly what.
As is written now, each member would be required to participate in a ride-along at the discretion of the police chief as to the time and location, attend a use-of-force class not to exceed two hours per session, and any other training designated or prescribed by the police department or city manager. That's the current draft.
Well, I could agree to that.
Mm-hmm.
That makes good language to me.
And a background check? Background checks?
That's not in here, we could add that at your discretion.
I thought that was in here.
Running a background check, of course, limits your membership, so by doing your background check, you determine if someone had a felony, uh, background, for instance, and they would be excluded.
Sure. Axe to grind possibly, or, you know, not feeling great about the police force?
Mm-hmm. Is that done?
Okay, so, we, we agreed on the policeman, no, the.
The certified instructor.
Instructor.
Mm-hmm.
What was the next thing we were saying?
Uh, I made some notes, I've got someone with a criminal justice background, someone with a medical background, someone with tactical instruction background.
Okay, yeah, we, we, we just agreed on just one.
The tactical certified.
Okay.
Well, that, that's the instructor, that's not a board member. That's the instructor, as, as what I heard. Am I getting this wrong?
Yeah, I think you're wrong.
That's the, so that person would actually be a board member?
Yes.
Is that person a board member?
As a board member or an advisor, but I think, I mean, a board, he'd be a probably valuable board member, because he's.
That's what I'm saying.
And trained.
Because there's no detective.
He would've been trained in everything, in, in all the, you know.
How hard is it to find people like that?
There's a bunch of them.
It's not that hard.
I mean, there's, probably ten or twenty in the area here.
Okay.
That would do it. Daytona State College, right down the street. There's a lot of them there.
Release academy.
Yeah.
I work with one, a guy who, yeah. Okay. Would we want him to be on the board, or do we want him as an advisor?
You mean, would he have a vote, or not?
He wouldn't have a vote if he was an advisor, but that's an important role. Still an important, it's a very important role.
Mm-hmm.
I think the advisor's gonna be probably the most important role.
I think he, it would be the advisor, I would like him as an advisor.
Okay.
And I, I think that that would.
You mean, non-voting?
Yeah.
Yes, advisor, non-voting.
Because that's a very, very important role.
Yeah.
They're gonna look to him for guidance and answers, and, and he's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it was a voting member, that would.
Gee.
Yeah, they would, they would, might follow the way a person votes.
Exactly, I agree.
So.
So we still don't have one person on the board yet?
That's okay, that's one, that's one good person.
Oh, yeah.
One good role.
Exactly. What about the medical?
May I ask, would you like to give the police chief the discretion of appointing that non-voting member as the advisor? Or is that something the commission would like to appoint?
I, I wouldn't want the police chief to, to, to appoint that person, but he could perhaps recommend a series of names to this board, to us, and then we appoint the person. Because I, I just don't want the police to be the, to appoint the board, uh, or the commission, whoever the commission is at that time. That's me.
No, I think that's, I think that's.
I agree.
Um, this is, you know, as opposed to the medical person, for me, I would assume, you know, since you're not, not gonna have, I would assume I would rather have, because because I don't wanna get too many people. I want some normal people. But as opposed to having a medical person, I would prefer to have a person with a more of a criminal justice background. Because I don't believe that they're gonna get into... I, I, I think they would have more of a, a broader understanding of, of background, of intent, and what, what should be expected of an officer. If I was looking for somebody with a certain background. And so if I had a choice out of those two, but, because I don't wanna have so many people. Because I, I don't think I need someone personally, that we have to have someone just because they were in the military. That doesn't make sense to me. You know? You know, they, they could be in the military, but I don't think it should be because they're in the military. That's not a qualification.
How many, how many people do we think is the right number for the board?
We, either five or seven. I don't think three or four is enough. I think either five or seven.
Just because you can get a, a one-vote discrepancy there. Because we're talk, we're not talking about land development code change or something. This is, you know, somebody's career that's hanging in the balance here, based on the outcome of an IA investigation.
Do you want any of that?
So...
No, no, all they're doing is reviewing and giving their opinion and recommendation as to what they thought should happen. This has no teeth.
Which will be...
In that way.
Which, you know, if, if, you know, then, then there's gonna, the next step is gonna be, you know, a, a response back as to, well, what happened? You know, the board did not agree with the IA outcome. So what, what did the police department do?
Well, the police department has already made their decision. The board is only reviewing their decision.
But...
The decision is made by the chief or the manager. And this board only reviews whether they agree yes or no. This is just how the boards work. Everywhere you go, that's how, that's what they do.
But isn't there a recommendation, recommendation back to the chief to revisit it or something to say?
No.
Perhaps the discipline wasn't appropriate?
No. They disagree or disagree with the chief, pretty much. They do write a response as maybe why, but it's not... This has no authority or bearing on what the chief or the manager, however, how they work out that decision makes.
The, the recommendation would go back to the manager as what you should do.
Yeah.
He has a chance to look at what they said. It should go back to the manager, then the manager can review what their comments were versus what he got from the police chief. And, and it would end up with a better decision in the end, I think.
And that's what I'm hoping for. At the end of the day, this board, the chief, has to make sure he's trying to be spot-on. Okay? And that's all, the board needs to do the same thing. And then we, we just wanna get it right. It's not about trying to get someone, for me. It's about trying to get it right, saying we don't mind looking at ourselves. But it's not, they don't have any, any, this, uh, this has less of a chance, you put the right people on there, of going awry than I think you think. And these, these are, these are common. It's just not a, it's just not a new practice. We just don't practice it.
How many, so, ormans got a board? How often do they meet?
I'm looking at their code now.
They meet every quarter, right? Every quarter? And I don't know if they're giving the sheer volume that we have.
Yeah, the board must meet at least quarterly.
And then what do they look at?
They look at, uh, uh, three categories. Uh, use of deadly force, alleged use of excessive force, and any instance wherein the police result, police action results in death or serious bodily injury. So that could be a pursuit or something other than excessive force.
So very narrow.
Or, yes.
But that one where, that, what's the, the other one that's not about force? The alleged, that's pretty wide.
Any instance where the action results in death or serious bodily injury. They also have, um, a right to review policy concerning many matters. Uh, deadly force, excessive force, discipline, equal employment, sexual harassment, and other issues determined by the chief to be of significant interest to the community. Those are policy matters they can look at.
Okay. So what do we think the number of people should be?
I agree with the five or seven. I think three is too small.
Five. Three's too small.
Five or seven, I agree.
Five or seven. Well, which one is it? Five or seven?
I agree.
Five.
You say five?
Five.
I agree with Commissioner Henry, seven.
Seven?
Mm-hmm.
I can go with seven.
I think seven is a good...
Mm-hmm.
Seven is...
I agree with that.
And then how many of them have to have some sort of background qualification versus the ones that would not be only two?
I would say three and four. So you got the criminal justice. That's the only one we've identified so far. We have the advisor as the tactical certified instructor, who's a non-voting member, just advising. So number one, or A1, person we've identified as a criminal justice. What else do we think we need?
Well, you could have more than one person with a criminal justice expertise on the, you know, a retired law enforcement.
That's fine.
You know? You know, I would, I would have a, kind of a laundry list of, of, uh...
Things that they could be.
And it's not a big long, big list. It might be five things. But, you know, that, you know, we were looking for, you know, I would say, I would say three people. You know, because if the four people who don't have the qualifications all vote one way, um, they can still get done what they wanna do. You know, but...
But we can't put people on the board who are gonna think like that. This is, that's a wretched, that's a wretched board member. And, and that's a wretched way to function.
Well, but we're looking at people that, we're gonna ask them to dedicate a lot of time. You know, because if, if we do every IA case, we're gonna ask them to...
We're not, we're not reviewing every IA case.
You know, if we, and I don't know the numbers for these four categories that were listed in the, the, the original ordinance, ordinance one. Um, you know, how many of those out of the sixty to eighty that we have a year fall into one of those four categories? You know, I mean, that's gonna kind of tell me a lot about how, what the time commitment is that we're asking for, from people. But reviewing these cases, that's why it takes six months to get an IA review done.
Okay. Come back and tell us how many cases that we had last year would fit that. You already know?
No, that's a question for the chief. I, I really don't know those numbers.
He stepped out to use...
Oh, you can already check now?
I'll look at it.
Those four categories that he's talking about. Just go ahead and check. So we'll know how many cases they have.
I get to get it, ask, let me do some more digging. This, this is gonna be generic, I don't know, I need to get...
Okay. All right. And so you'll get it back to me, uh, another time? All right. Because that'll tell us how many meetings they have to have. I say, I don't, I mean, I, 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 I want this to be a voice of extraordinary, ordinary citizens.
Ordinary, ordinary, okay.
You know? And that's what I think it should be. So we, so I say two with qualification. And then we determine, like you say, a laundry list of what those qualifications might be. Okay? And so let's determine what those might be.
The, the other thing that I'd be curious, and this one I think is for Bob, is to, some of the places like Lauderdale that have these, when they're doing a review, how long does it take for them to do the review? Because I'm thinking, you get a file this big, it's gonna take you a, a, quite a bit of time. But if it's, I, I may be wrong. You know, this is something that none of us have ever done before. So, you know, we're kind of learning on the fly and trying to make sure we, you know, hit the bullseye with this thing. So I would find, I would ask that we get maybe two or three different jurisdictions to give us an estimate on, you know, the range of time, number of hours that it takes for their board to review a case. Because I can't imagine you could do it in an hour. You know? And I'm, I'm praying it's not a week. Because we're not gonna find volunteers who are gonna dedicate that amount of time.
Well, they may actually get the information in advance to review on their own and then come together collectively to, to discuss it. That's how it was when I was on the, the, um, the board, the adjustment board. I got my package, just like we get our stuff. And we look it over and we try to make some decisions prior to, and then come together so that they're not exhausting themselves trying to look through the whole file at one time.
That's a good point, yeah. So how about, the, the mechanics work of that on the review itself? You know, is, I think something that's, um, meaningful to me on how much, you know, what, what we're really asking for. You know, right now, I mean, obviously, uh, you know, we put in the most time, but, you know, planning board, you know, they, they go to full hours a lot of times. You know, and they have an agenda that's, you know, close to half the hours, at least half the size of ours. So I, I wanna make sure I understand what, what I'm asking for out of the folks that we're looking for to volunteer.
I'll be glad to gather that. That should be readily available, just from looking at their meeting minutes, to know how long their meetings have gone. I can tell you that we did call, um, the, the legal departments for, uh, Fort Lauderdale and Orman Beach just to ask if they've had any issues, legal issues with the, the operation of their board. And was told in both instances that they've had no issues.
Can I ask a question about process? So, we have the review board. The review board makes a recommendation. The recommendation, let's say it's contrary to what is already in the books. They decide something different. They decide, you know, we have a, we have an issue here we don't like. They then take that to the city commissioner, correct? Uh, sorry, to the city manager, to the city manager. The city manager then does what? So could the city manager then decide to investigate more, investigate less, say, no, 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 it doesn't really matter? What, what is the next step?
All of those.
So ultimately, it still rests with the city manager at the very end of the day?
The recommendation is not as to, not so much, I should say, as to what, whether the discipline was agreed to or not agreed to, although that is a part of it. But there's backup, which is also required as to policy. So the, the point of the board and, and, you know, perhaps I could be more articulate in, in the drafting to reach this point. But the point is, is to make recommendations as to the investigative procedure and as to your policies, and, and not to focus so much on the outcome of the investigation, but rather how the investigation was conducted.
Mm-hmm. And what if the, there, there's no mandate that says the city manager has to accept it? He can go, okay, this is good. She can say, okay.
That is correct. There's, there's no, um, there's no binding effect to the recommendation. The manager or the chief, however it may be, can accept or reject or, um, move on at their discretion.
Okay.
Okay. I, I think we need to, I was, I was, I, I think we need to determine what the categories are. That, of the people that we, um, and, and I don't wanna belabor this since we, we know we're not gonna do this tonight in a, a, uh... What do we call it? A, uh, we, we decide, we say we need to have a workshop. So why don't we take what we have, if, if it's agreeable to you all? Take what we have, the information that we have, uh, come back with some list of criteria that you can think of. We know five of them are gonna be residents. Do we have any requirements of the residents?
Such as a background?
Such as... Background check? I mean, and...
I think background...
Maybe, maybe a, a, if you wanna create, um... People from Daytona Beach. Uh, I think they should be from Daytona Beach, with the exception of maybe, uh, the fire, the firearms expert. Um, and I, I think the rest of the residents really, we should live in Daytona Beach, unless it's the other two that we have a broad list of c- categories or criteria that we think that normal people might not fit.
I would go with the, the, the two. It's either live or principal place of business. So that way we, like, my example of, like, somebody that teaches at one of our universities, colleges, universities, that lives in a different city, could meet the principal place of business because they work in Daytona Beach. You know, somebody that's a criminal justice professor. The, the, the other five, which I still think should be four, I would choose criminal background check and, you know, and then the, whatever Bob had in here.
Since we're gonna do term limit, right? It's gonna be a limited term. Is that correct or no?
Stagger terms, right?
Stagger terms?
Stagger terms. They could be reappointed, of course, um, at your discretion. But they're three-year terms, subject to reappointment.
So long.
Or replacement, up to you.
Okay.
If they all start at the same time, how do we stagger?
Um, I wish Betty were here. She could probably explain that a little bit.
I, I know how it works. Because somebody has a one-year term, three people have a one-year term, two people have a two-year term, and three...
So you started that already staggered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Well, it could be that we stagger the terms and then we say that, uh, four of them have to be from one of the zones. And then we rotate the zones according to, over time. But we, I am not really interested in, since we only have five people. I'm not really interested in just saying that it just has to be this person from this zone. Because I really want dynamic people, but I do want a diverse body of people.
So if the right people, we haven't got two people from one zone that are good?
I don't, I'm not opposed to that.
I would not oppose it. I, I, I just think five people, city resident, background check. Bob, you have anything else in your qualification there?
Uh, well, I would point out that, that as it's drafted, they are at-large appointments, meaning the whole commission appoints, it's not by zone, even though it's seven. It's still, they're all at-large appointments. So it's a vote not limited to zoning or voting districts.
So Bob's got it in here that they're also registered voters?
Well, that's, that's, that's normal, right?
Yeah. That's our standard language.
So five city residents, criminal background check, registered voter. I think that's it.
Are we seven members or five members? I lost...
Seven.
So those five.
Seven.
And then, and the other two would be people who would meet the cri, the qualifications that my recommendation would be, you're, you either live in or principal place of business is Daytona Beach.
I'll be glad to draft that for your consideration.
Okay.
If there's consensus on that.
And we do the principal place of business with the redevelopment boards.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not unheard of.
Yeah. All right. Do we need any, is there anything? Yeah? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, when we lost power, there was a lightning strike and I lost power. So I haven't heard. I've been offline for like the last five or 10 minutes. So I, I don't know what I missed, if, if my votes require a claim, but, um... Just, I was only gone like four or five minutes.
I'm not sure. You wanna tell them what we've gotta discuss here?
I think bottom line is, we're gonna redraft and bring it back to you. So you'll have a chance to look at it.
And I, I went offline at 9:06 when I texted, uh, the city attorney that I was, I lost next. I only lost like the last three minutes, that's what you guys were saying.
Okay, we agreed to seven members. Seven members, um, five of which are, uh, they have no pre-existing qualifications, two of which will have a series of qualifications that they meet. And we have one instructional, uh, tactics, uh, expert, uh, who's an advisor. I think that's a fair recap.
And we'll require a background check.
Yeah. And we'll require a background check.
So no felons would be allowed on the board.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments as to where we are?
I think the only two things we're waiting on, then, is chief to give us a count of those categories for maybe 2019, and then Bob doing a little, getting us some information about what we think we're looking for for a time commitment from the folks that volunteer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's important information. Okay. Uh, yeah, we did work it out. Uh, good job. Uh, any other questions, comments? Okay. Uh, is that it? Uh, I can't say... First is Commissioner Reed, before... Go ahead now.
Um, nothing really to say, other than just thank you for your support on my loss of my sister this past week.
Lack of support. Sorry. Uh, where, where I go next? Commissioner Trager.
I wanna say how proud I am of our police department and all the officers in it. And I especially am so pleased at the chief for wanting to be so transparent. Wonderful.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
I'll keep it short. Where are we? I mean, I, I just wanted to, I'm not sure anybody at home can see this, but we have, um... Could you give us a quick update on the short-term rentals, please, sir?
Oh, well, um, Gary's here. Is Gary still here? Gary left. Gary Glassman was our lead attorney on this.
That was great.
We, we won the case on appeal. We just got the, the per curiam informed, uh, affirmed order, uh, yesterday. I did, um, notify the commission of that. And so bottom line is, case is over. The city prevailed. Our existing regulations will continue to be in effect.
Okay, fantastic.
Can they appeal?
That was the appeal.
Okay.
But they, but they can't appeal it in the Supreme Court?
Uh, no, it's based on, right.
So as of right now, we have areas designated for short-term rentals. And when you're not in that area, you're in fact breaking the law, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All righty. And then the second thing is, I, I received some, um, situation with the GoX rentals. So do we have anything we can do? I thought, and we discussed this earlier, that we, uh, had said that they could not do certain things with the GoX. And I'm getting some businesses telling me that they're still having an issue with it.
What, what's, what's GoX?
GoX is the scooter thing.
Okay.
If I may, uh, they had asked for a meeting with us. We set a meeting with them.
We set a meeting with them. Uh, Mr. Glazer or Glasser is their attorney, and we were about 24 hours or a little less from meeting, I'd gathered, and the number of people for it, they canceled the meeting. I said, we'll reschedule as soon as we can gather the same group again, so at this moment, we're waiting to meet with them. After they had a meeting at their request, we set it up, talked with them and worked with the city attorney's office, they canceled it, and that's where we are right now.
Okay, so I guess my, my question is this. We have some people who are not, thank you, sir, who are not, I guess, renting these anymore because they, they stopped the program, uh, because we, we asked them to. And then we have some people who apparently are still enforcing the program and renting it out. So how do we address that imbalance?
Well, we've really gotta look at those on a case-by-case basis. It really depends on who's offering and where they're offering from. Our, our land development code would generally prevent rentals and sales from outside the business and utilization of the public right-of-way for purposes of operating the business.
And so is that a code issue?
That's a code issue.
Okay, all righty. And then also, um, as it relates to the, I'm concerned about the, um, the eviction moratorium that's ending, is it, or has it been extended? I'm thinking it ended June 25th, or it was ending June 25th.
That was a moratorium on evictions in a governor's executive order. I don't know the date off the top of my head. It is limited.
I'm thinking it's, and I'm thinking it's June, so my question is, you know, if people needed rental assistance, let's say, it's not eligible if you have an eviction? You're not eligible for any rental assistance if you have an eviction? Is that correct, or if you're waiting to be evicted?
I don't know.
Okay, and do we still have funds in the rental program?
We did have.
Deputy City Manager, High Chief, for our rental assistance, um, to date, we've helped 282 households.
Wow.
For 398 months of assistance, uh, for a total of 359,000.
Wow.
Based on our average rental assistance, uh, we should have about 89 households we could help with our CBG, CBDG COVID funds.
Right.
However, all citizens within Volusia County are still eligible to get assistance through Volusia County with the CARES Act funding.
Okay, so, but if they go through, they've gotta go through Daytona first and then Volusia? Can they do both?
Right now, they're going through Daytona Beach. Once it transfers over to Volusia County, uh, they could get assistance directly from Volusia County.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, and then also, Commissioner Reed and I are, we keep, we share a lot of areas, so there are two areas we share. One is MMB and also MLK area, a little bit of that as well. So my question is, you know, I saw this on Beach Street, and I, I noticed that we had some extra parking available for Beach Street. Anything on MLK that we're working on right now to improve the parking situation, sir?
Uh, we looked at some areas that were not, um, designated for parking previously, and, uh, we're picking up some. I don't know the exact number, but we'll pick up a number of additional parking places along the street.
And so I'm clear, it's the areas where, let's say, there's a, some vacant property, and there used to be like a little sidewalk, and we're going to just mark it out for parking?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then on MMB, uh, are we in design right now with the, um, with the beautification project? Where are we with that exactly?
Mr. Holmes, be it.
Commissioner Reed, jump in at any time, we share this.
I wanna go back to what you just asked. We're marking, we're taking a, a, a empty lot and marking it for parking?
No, you have, you have lots that have driveways identified, and there's no house or no business there.
Correct.
And, and previously, they did not mark it for parking. We're gonna mark it for parking.
Oh, so where the driveway would have had, okay.
Yeah, so the driveway stays, but we just, we can park.
There are, there is an empty lot there, like I think it's Foot in MLK. Is that Foot?
There's a couple of them.
Yeah. We don't own those, huh?
No.
Mm-hmm. Hello, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for asking about MMB. Uh, we have a design, the plan has been bid out and due back July 16th, and then in between now and then, we're working with the Public Information Office to get a stakeholders' meeting scheduled, so.
Is there any way that Commissioner Reed and I could get a, an idea of what that design looks like?
Certainly.
Because we saw one months ago, and I would like to see an updated one if possible.
Yep, we'd certainly be happy to, happy to get to that.
And then also, um, lights, well, since you're here, there are the lights on A1A, and apparently they're marked from 1 to 250, and some of them are City Lights, and some of them are Out. And I think a few months back, we had asked for a lighting report of some sort. Did we ever get that, the lighting report from FPL or City Lights?
They do, they do have a report.
We did. Uh, FPL currently has a project that they're working in design, and we are working with them to match the fixtures. They're gonna improve some intersection lighting out there, and so we would be matching their fixtures with intermediate lighting and getting those back.
And so this would be addressing the lighting on, on A1A?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then did we actually have a, a number of how many lights are on and working versus how many lights are not working? Do we have anybody who does that?
Uh, we do, but I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get that and provide it to you.
I would love that. I think we were dealing with that months back, a few months back, okay? And I, well, there is one more little thing. Um, I really do enjoy this update. So the equipment at the Peabody, we're getting new equipment there. What happens to the old equipment?
Yep.
Before you tell me, I really would like for it to maybe be used at some of our other centers. I think that would be great, that I throw that in.
It's not salvageable. We replace it because it's no good. What was left, there, it may be auctioned as surplus, but it's because there's parts and pieces somebody might use, but of the system, there's a, a, we've been renting systems for a long time because it wasn't usable. The center array, which if you look up when you're in the Peabody, directly in the ceiling, you'll see some, like a grill. There's actually speakers and so on up in there. That was salvageable, it is being used, it's part of the system. Everything else, I think, is mostly long gone, but whatever there may be left, will be sold as surplus, but it's not as if you could take something, say, I'm gonna take this
Right.
somewhere else and put it in play.
Only because I know that there is an acting program out of Yvonne Scarlet Gold, and I think it'd be really great if they could have some professional equipment or sound equipment, anything like that, that would help. That's all.
Well, actually, we work on those sections too. Let me take a look and see. I think there may be some solutions that aren't as expansive as what you're thinking, more affordable, and we'll take a look.
Oh, wouldn't that be nice?
The manager's permission will do that.
Oh, well, thank you so much. I appreciate that, and that is...
It doesn't have to be big, expensive, and complicated.
No, 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 just, just usable, so that they can have a better experience. Thank you so much. Um, that's it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillette?
Uh, Yusuf Delgado. I'm gonna go back to Gil.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Delgado.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here. Um, I, I, I do have one question from someone like constituents about the, um, the barricades along the, um, A1A and what the game plan is with those. Are they coming down anytime soon? Some of the businesses along there have asked me about it, and I don't know if it's entirely in my zone, or maybe some of the other folks don't as well. Um, is there any information I can pass on to them about that?
Oh, the plan initially was to keep those up in place until, uh, probably right after the Fourth of July.
Okay. All right, that's about it. Thanks very much. I think, um, I, you know, I, I, I did about, yeah, Assistant Review Board, I mean, I think everyone has made a great point of saying that, you know, this is not a condemnation of our police department, it's not us detracting from anything that we've done, and, you know, we can celebrate our successes without, um, and, and implement something like this without it being a condemnation or a criticism of, of any of the men and women who work in our police department. Uh, you know, I have been involved in, uh, cases where someone lost their life, but I think police officer acted absolutely as perfectly as possible, and I would say that more often than not, our, the, and our department does a great job even in the most difficult situations. So, I mean, I wanna make sure that, I think everyone here is saying over and over again, this is about, um, you know, achieving and striving for excellence and constant incremental improvement. So, you know, I think Commissioner May said, why do something 20% if you can do it 100%? Well, why something 98 or 99% if you do it 100%? So to me, it's about going the extra mile and the extra, you know, and, and really, um, as some of the other commissioners said, Commissioner Reed said, being proactive and trying to, um, address concerns before they even happen here. So, I mean, I wanna make sure that it's, you know, not lost in translation in any form, anywhere, that, you know, this is a, a condemnation or a criticism or reaction to any specific event in our police department. Rather, it's us saying, you know, we have good officers, a good department, a great department, we can and will do even better, and we will set our sights and our standards even higher, because that's what we wanna do, that's what we aspire to, and if we don't set our sights, um, you know, as high as possible, then we won't achieve our goals. But I think that's what everyone in this commission has said, but I just wanna make sure that that's absolutely crystal clear to anyone watching this, that nothing, take it out of context, it's not a condemnation or criticism, it's not meant to be second-guessing, it's not meant to be an insult, or a, uh, anything other than a way to improve an already good organization. And I think as the chief acknowledged, I think there will be good that comes out of this from the perspective of citizens who look at this, will see that things were done the right way. See, the system was working, and in those instances where it's not working, then we'll see that too. Um, but I, I hope that it's something that is embraced and by law enforcement, um, just as well as the chief has seemed to embrace it here tonight. So that, I just wanna make sure that was, you know, at least my, my summary of everything that I've heard tonight, and, you know, I, I look forward to talking with you all, and I'll talk to the city attorney about some of my specific concerns in here, be sure, but I think, uh, I think we did great work tonight moving forward and doing this. I think we're on the cutting edge of this issue, and I think more cities will follow suit. Um, I remain a little concerned about the, the second wave, so to speak, of the COVID-19. I think, uh, we're wise to continue to be cautious. I don't think we've seen, you know, the end of it by any means. I think businesses are still struggling to recover. I read, uh, recently that several large gyms went out of business. I mean, we're seeing the economic fallout still, so, um, I think it's important for us to continue to be careful as the city has not, uh, rushed back into a pre-COVID-19 lifestyle. I don't know if we'll ever be able to go back 100% to the way they were before, um, but, you know, I, I think it's very important that as the city, we set a good example and we, uh, you know, to the extent that we can, legislate good ideas. And that's why, you know, as much as it, what, you know, was disappointing to have to possibly tell, uh, you know, know about the ban, that things like that are difficult decisions that we have to continue to make, because, you know, people want, they wanna get out, they wanna go to these events, um, you know, and sometimes we have to, uh, have to step in and, you know, and keep the buzz, you know, and just say, no, you know, it's just not something that we can endorse at this moment, or it's not something that we feel is safe, and, you know, that's a difficult, unpopular decision that I think we'll have to make. We're gonna, our city state, you know, and continue to have such a low rate of infection here and such a, um, you know, I think we've come through this relatively un-gazed, and of course, for me to say, I'm not someone who's lost a loved one, um, to it, those that have in the community wouldn't agree with me, but I still think, uh, we've done a good job and continue to do it and continue mindful, so, um, and I think we're all on the same page when it comes to that, and I think it's the right decision. Tonight, I know it's the right decision. Um, and, you know, again, Commissioner Reed, my, my condolences on your loss, I'm sorry. I know we spoke about it last, uh, last week, but again, my heart's with you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillette?
So, uh, Paula, condolences, but also congratulations. You went unopposed, you were re-elected.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very, um, um, you were a great perspective on this commission, and I, uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're, know that, or glad to know that you will be back up here for another four years. Um, uh, so I said I had a couple dozen people that called and complained about the crowds Memorial Day weekend, I had about five of them call me and say how appreciative they were of the, uh, of the extra police presence that there was on the beachside after that. Um, and a couple of them really got a little bit emotional, you know, I didn't think you guys ever listened to us, you know, and like, no, we always listen, you know? Uh, and I know there was, like, the guy that Hilton was evidently not happy about it, but, um, that's the only complaint that I've heard so far about, uh, the police present part, um, but it was something that was appreciated because once again, the, the folks that talked to me were, you know, they're, they're worried about going back on lockdown, and I think it's pretty clear, based on the governor's press conference yesterday, that, you know, he's, he's chosen a path and we're staying on it, that there probably will not be one, which is why it puts more onus on the, the local governments, you know, cities and counties to do the right thing. Um, you know, thinking through Dino's request, you know, like I said, I would love to see that thing work out, but, you know, you can't, if you're doing 50% everywhere around the VIP area, you know, you really can't do more than 50% in the, in the general admission area. Um, you know, by the time you, you have to have ushers and have little groups and make sure the groups are separated by six feet from the other groups, and I'm, uh, I'm, I'll be curious to see what comes back with the, the written plan that staff and Dino come up with, but I'm a, I'm a little skeptical as to whether or not, I'm almost thinking it's gonna be about a third capacity, not even half-capacity, uh, to be able to, to do something that I think is, uh, something I could agree with from a public health perspective. Um, the, uh, we are, uh, not following our normal process with developing the budget, so, I mean, for obvious reasons, but, you know, this is a year where we're going to need to be at rollback or below. Um, this is a austere year for us because of the economic effects that we're just now starting to, to realize from, from the, from the pandemic. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen at the end of next month when the extra 600 bucks runs out, the people are getting per week from, from, um, from unemployment. Uh, you know, it's getting people by right now, and, and some people, it's helping, you know, I think it was, the number was something about 60% of people were making more unemployment than they were making when they were working. Well, when it goes back to 280, 275 a week, that ain't gonna be the case anymore. So we've got a lot of people that are gonna be hurting in this town, you know, business owners and, and people that work particularly at small businesses that we need to make sure we're very cognizant of as we, uh, you know, as we develop the budget. I would think that, uh, we're, we probably need to look very hard at our capital projects and make sure we're limiting it to really just the essential projects. Uh, you know, the, we, we try and do a lot of beautification things, you know, as we can, but, you know, we, we just need to make sure we're, we're, our priorities are right as we're looking at adopting the budget as we move forward. You know, we're only, uh, what, July, August, September? We got six meetings between now and when we adopt the budget, and I haven't even seen a draft at this point. So, you know, Jim, I think we need to get some feedback to us about, you know, what staff is thinking, um, because certainly there are some priorities that, that need to be, uh, shouldn't be ignored, but, you know, there's, there's gonna be a lot of hurt out there this year that we need to make sure we're, uh, we're, you know, doing what we can to, to address. Um, and let's see, lastly, uh, there is a, kind of a rumor, a story going around in Indigo about it having sold. Um, the, uh, that actually came from a guy who works for Indigo, who's, uh, I think he cuts grass out there, who had told one of the residents that, uh, he and a couple other guys were up there, and they met, the two guys were there, and they introduced themselves as a new owner. And we haven't, Jim, we haven't heard anything from Pelican Bay or Indigo. So I'm not sure, they might be contract purchasers, um, as opposed to actual owners, uh, but the story coming from this employee was that they were, it was two, two guys, and that their plan was the same as what the current owner's plan was to basically try and squeeze in as many multifamily units as he can, um, with a little bit of single family and have a, a nine-hole golf course that would be, uh, built on the second through eighth holes of what, you know, what it used to be. So that's, I, you know, I hate to call it rumor because it was sourced to somebody that works there, but, you know, we don't, the city has not been approached or communicated with at all regarding, you know, whatever transactions going on out there, but, you know, we do wanna make sure that, uh, you know, the residents have as accurate information as, as we can get them as these things pop up. But as of right now, you know, it's, we have, we haven't heard from them since March of 2019. So, you know, we're, uh, I'm not sure where, where they are in the process. It's private property, he can take as much time as he needs, but, you know, until he asks us to do something or submits an application, you know, we're, we're, we don't have a lot of tangible information to, to share with the residents out there, but, um, I know the mayor and I have both been on record to say, and we're not gonna, uh, we're gonna be very careful about projects to come forward in communities where you're looking at changing the, the culture of that community, and, um, you know, I think it, you know, both Pelican Bay South and Indigo are two of those places where, you know, we're gonna, you know, I'm gonna be very, uh, critical of what they bring forward to make sure they're not doing anything that's going to, to harm or, or, you know, financially, in particular, the folks that live in those communities, and, um, you know, but I will certainly continue to share information as I come across it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Commissioner Henry?
Um, so in talking with, uh, city manager yesterday regarding, um, the chief's retirement in, in, or drop ending in December, I, um, asked about plans for the new, new police chief, and, um, I know you mentioned that you wanted to do a, a search for a chief, and, and I just wanna know how much that, if you could get me information on how much it costs to do a search for a police chief?
I'll be happy to, but I, I could tell you this, uh, since you and I talked, I have, you know, asked for additional information, and I'm not to a point of knowing exactly what the status is of that, that position, so that may or may not go forward at this point.
What may not, may or may not go forward?
The selection of a police chief. I may stay with the same one. There is a, the law says, there's a rule that says one thing, and there's some legal issues that have to be resolved, and I'm, I'm not to the point of getting that resolved.
Are you gonna consider what the rest of the commission, are you, that's a big decision? Are you gonna include us on that decision and, and ask what each commissioner thinks about that decision?
I haven't made a decision at any point right now.
All right.
I'd be happy to take.
Prior to making that decision, are you?
I would be happy to take any input that any of the commissioners would have as it relates to any of the jobs in the city.
That's all my comments for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have quite a bit. I realize that it's late, but this is what it is. First thing I want to say is I don't know a whole lot about the police chief situation, but I have been, I just don't know. So, I will have a conversation with you about, you know, whatever, what my perspective is on it, because I don't know a lot about it. We are obviously getting a new manager, so that really weighs on my
Right.
perspective of things greatly. And new manager has to have some opinions. But I have opinions also that, if he, you know, I would share with him too. So, I will share those with you. I'm not at a point right now to even think about that because I have so much other stuff here. Congressman Walz, I met with Congressman Walz today and Senator Wright from the state of Florida. And thank hardy because I made a last-minute call to him, and he was able to just give me a quick coaches huddle of things to talk about. So, I appreciate that. But Senator Wright stated that there's $1.2 billion in the state that cities are not asking for as it relates to CARES COVID funds. And I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not, but I just want to make sure that you know that there's, he said that this $1.2 billion that the state has and cities are not asking for it. Which from my mind, even as it relates to what we were able to do with the, with the water bill, I think that should be recoverable funds from the CARES.
Yeah.
So, if we could recover that, why wouldn't we ask them for another, that's, you know, check on that money and see if we can get some more of it, and see if we might even possibly be able to do that again or something else along that line. But at any rate, he, that was a part of our conversation today. Has the county determined how to allocate, normally I would ask this question, but I didn't get to talk to you. I don't normally ask questions in the meeting if y'all, you know, that doesn't normally happen. But has the county determined how to allocate $16 million that they got?
No.
How they would, they still haven't determined?
I don't think they've, they've come back with anything at this point, not unless they just did.
Drew Droosko, deputy city manager. As far as the county CARES Act funding, so the governor's office, the state money that the state received from the federal government, that is being distributed to counties less than 500,000. So, our city's allocation is going to be a reimbursement model from Volusia County. Right now, they are drafting the inter-local agreement that is required by 60 CFR. And they're also drafting the required forms. Those will go back to county council in the July. They only have one meeting at the end of July. It'll go back for their agreement, and then we will sign on to the agreement. One of the questions will be if during our state of emergency, can yourself and the manager sign that agreement and ratify it at a future council meeting so we don't delay our reimbursement? We are finalizing due tomorrow from city staff is our numbers of COVID-related expenses. I think we actually have them all in advance. So, we will submit that to the county after the manager's review so they could start budgeting how much allocation is going to go where. Again, it, these things are COVID-related expenses. So, whether it's our thermometer screening or any employees that 75% or greater of their job duties were directly related to COVID, if we do temperature screening, kiosk, UV lighting, and the AC systems, future capital improvements, long as they're completed before December 30th, yes, December 30th, not 31st, they are eligible for reimbursement through Volusia County's CARES Act fund.
Okay, great.
Dropping everything.
Thank you. I want to illustrate it just for a moment how proud I am of our city's parks. If you really take a look at the last two or three years, if you look at our parks and the renovation that they have undergone, it is probably among the most amazing transformations that our community has experienced. And so, sometime I want, if you haven't really had a chance, just to, just to ride around and look at places like Sunnyland and what we called, I don't know, Daisy Stark, Harlem Park, what's that called, the former name?
The Daisy Stark?
No, not Daisy Stark, Harlem Park. That's not, it's got another name. Joe Harris. What we're doing at Derbyshire, just all across the board. The parks are looking extraordinary. And I'm, it's among the most pleasing things that this city has been able to do over the last, since I've been mayor. We've been talking about our country and where we are. There's a lot of, lot of things transpiring in our nation. And I met last week with the city manager and Susan Sabone and Betty Goodman with an idea that I had that was just, just an idea. But I, and this is what it has turned into. We're going to host a virtual town hall mayor's summit that's referred to as the mayor's summit on equity. And this will be on the 29th and 30th, which is not the coming Monday and Tuesday, but the following Monday and Tuesday. And what we have done is that we have invited stakeholders from 10 different areas in our community to come together via, not social media, but, and it's not Skype, Zoom. And they will come together and they will meet in their own rooms. But prior to their meeting, I will greet them and sort of lay out the purpose of why we are assembling. And these 10 different categories include media, religion, neighborhoods, law enforcement, criminal justice, K-12, higher ed, healthcare, business. And they, they will meet and they will discuss what it is that, how they perceive their area and how they're doing in their area, how they might be able to improve their area as it relates to equity. And all of this is in the wake of the transformational process that this nation is engaged in of confronting the ugly demon of racial disparities, racism, and issues of equity that have been present since our foundation. So, we have these 10 groups, but they will be divided into their own room. They won't all be in one room. They'll go into 10 different rooms. And then the objective is that all of these people who agree to participate will go back to their respective agency, respective institution. I think one I forgot to talk about was social services. I knew I was missing one. But they'll go back and they will develop a plan that they and their agency agree to, and they will come back in two or three months and share that plan with us. Then they'll go back and implement it. So, over a course of six months, we will have three meetings focused on one, confronting the issue, acknowledging the issue, and planning, two, executing. And then the third meeting will be, they will come back and they will assess, how did we do? You know, what did, what, what did we come away with? Say, if you're K-12 or if you're higher education, you might have made a plan to say, we're going to talk about this with our students. This is how we're going to address it in our institution. Now, all of us in these different institutions have hiring responsibilities. And, you know, there are some ways that we could all say we're going to work on that sort of issue. But before we do all of that, on the 29th, we're going to take, residents will sign up, and they will take these same 10 groups, and they will have an opportunity to join a group and, all virtual, and talk about the issues inside of a group so that we listen to what residents have to say. We hear their perspective. And we know that the perspective of a resident is not always 100% accurate. But it's their perspective, and businesses need to hear their perspective, the religious community, we all need to hear their perspective. We need to value their perspective and take that into consideration once we meet. So, they'll do that on the 29th. The facilitators from the 29th will be the same facilitators on the 30th in the same rooms. That's the goal as of right now. And some of you will get an invitation to join a room. I haven't sent those out to you all, but if you can do it, do it. It'll be from 2:00 to 4:00 on Thursday and Friday, Monday and Tuesday. Tuesday is the stakeholder, decision maker, the folks who influence policy. But that Monday is first to listen. Then over the next six months, I will host a couple more listening sessions as the mayor where I simply listen to folks tell us what they think and how they feel, because people do need to be heard. I will always share that with all of the people who are stakeholders. After this whole process runs the gamut, the objective then is that we come back annually and have just a summit. Everybody can talk about how they're doing in this area. Because what I've learned is that if, if we don't acknowledge, if we don't discuss this issue, we will never, and it can't be something that we discuss, you know, every two or three years. Needs to be something that we discuss, you know, regularly. And in having that discussion, you know, after we have that discussion, we have to be about action. And that's why this is multi-pronged in this way. So, look to hear from me, not all of you, but if you all, I'll send you all an invitation. You can decide if there's one of these that you may or may not want to participate in. But the bottom line is, I think the time is now for healthy confrontation and healthy discussion on issues that will make our, our nation better. Because if I haven't learned anything from what I've been watching and, and what I believe, and this is why, you know, the Citizens Review Board, I think that people are looking for leadership. You know, and, and we have to be willing to find ways to lead. Can't lead without discussing. So, that, those are my remarks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could piggyback on that, if you all recall, it's been a couple of months now that I've, I've told us to think about a disparity study. I think we as a city also need to do our part to say, what are we doing?
Mm-hmm. There was a flag.
Okay. So, I really would like to revisit that. I sent you all an email regarding that. But there's a cry from the city in regards to that, you know, what are, what are our business transactions like in regards to minority business owner, women business owner? How, how are we doing in regards to that? So, if you recall, I also said that I'd spoken with the dean of the business college, Ada Wright, and they'd done this study, the students had done this type of study for UCF. So, they're already familiar with it. So, we're always talking about how much it costs us when we're going to do some type of consulting. This could be a project for the students for the fall semester thing, hopefully if they come back in the fall. But something that could be, the business professors could supervise it to make sure that it's done accurately and just let us look at ourselves as well, you know, the man in the mirror.
Mm-hmm. I think that's, that's, that's the type of conversation that I want every institution and agency, every individual to sort of engage in, is what is it that we can do? So, I'm, I think that we, if we're leading with mass, we need to lead in every area.
I agree.
Bringing about equity. Okay. You have any comments?
Yes, sir. The, on the 18th, which is tomorrow, I'll be taking vacation. I'll be gone for a couple of weeks. I'll be back before the 1st.
Okay.
And Betty Goodman and my deputies will be here to assist in anything that you might need.
Okay. All right. Enjoy yourself.
Yes, sir. And one other comment, Mr. Mayor, about the budget. We have processed in drafting a budget, but we're not, we're not to the point of having anything complete because we don't have the revenue estimates from the state. Soon as we have that, we'll have a better idea of what we have to do with our budget.
You know, Mr. Mayor, we usually do the process. We can start out with strategic planning and then, you know, setting priorities and whatnot. And then the budgets, you know, trying to figure out how to spend money on the priorities that we have. And we didn't, we didn't do any of that this year. So, you know, it's a different process, and I understand why. I mean, it kind of needed to be this way. But, you know, clearly, last year's priority list, we didn't get everything done. So, maybe we can take that into consideration as we're looking at what to fund. And, you know, the revenue projections are going to be, are going to be interesting. So. But I do look forward to seeing something because I don't want to have something sprung on me in August. Then all of a sudden in September, I'm, you know, being looked to to adopt it.
You'll, you'll have a draft budget in, in July at the latest, the mid-part of July. But the 15th, I think we're supposed to, but we should have, as soon as we have it available, we're going to make, make it available to you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Jagger? Okay, there are no further comments? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.